Okay. Ready? Thanks. I'm gonna call the town council work session from May 27th to order. We are arriving. And would you, do you, earlier we talked about, are we doing the opening first and then getting lunch? Or you want us to go?
Go and grab your food and then come back here and you'll eat at the dais. We'll do a quick opening and then we'll go into our exec session.
Okay, perfect. So we'll be back within 10 to 15 minutes and do the welcome and start. Okay. All right. I think everybody's back. Thank you guys for joining us for our retreat. My welcome is just, I really just wanna thank the other council members because I really enjoy working with this group. I think we have a good rigorous discussion every couple of weeks when we get together. And I also just want to encourage everyone to remember that everybody up here has a totally unique viewpoint. And you were elected for that viewpoint and for the people who you represent in this community. And I think it's terrific to just, you know, there are gonna be things that you're more comfortable with and things that you're less comfortable with, and everybody brings that to this table. And I think that's just a really important thing for us to continue to remember as we're moving forward, that we're not all gonna agree on things, we can all put our two cents in to make stronger projects. But I think it's perfectly fine to do your best to move the project forward as you can contribute and totally fine if not every, you know, every project meets 100% of your goals and needs. As long as you've worked towards making it the best it can be for our community, then we each have done our responsibility here. So just wanted to thank you and of course, we all thank staff for all the hard work and getting, actually doing all the things that this council really moves forward as priorities for the community. And we really appreciate that hard work from all of you. And then I guess one other thing to keep in mind today, that what we're doing today is probably the most important thing that a council does. I think, you know, the staff really deals with the day to day and the projects that are ongoing, but prioritizing like these things, this is what the council really needs to pay attention to. Of course, this year, we're gonna have to probably make a little bit more tougher decisions than we have, at least since I've been on council, maybe since Dick's been on. Just because we have a lot of wonderful projects that we wanna see moving forward, but not endless budget. So it's gonna, you know, take some real conversation about what rises to the top in this one to three year plan. But it is our duty as council people to prioritize that based on our knowledge of what the community wants and needs. So just wanna encourage everybody to bring what they, you know, bring your perspective and continue with the good conversations that we have, not, not being concerned about agreeing unnecessarily. You know, a 7-0 vote is not the most important thing. The most important thing is that we've all contributed to make sure that we've got the best plan for the community. Shannon, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, so I'll just give you a quick overview of what we're trying to do this afternoon or what we're planning to do this afternoon. And I've made a lot of notes, so I apologize if I'm doing more reading than I normally would. And so once I finish the overview, we're gonna move into about a 30-minute session with Keely. We're gonna receive some guidance and advice from her on processes and procedures and just best practice functioning for the council and staff. So that's, you know, I think that is really important. I'm, you know, very much looking forward to that priority setting part of our afternoon. But I think the piece that Keely brings to this is gonna be really important for ensuring our success going forward. And so then we're gonna move in, we'll come out of exec session, we'll move into an open session exercise to identify priorities that the staff can focus on for the next one, one to three years. And just to sort of highlight a few things that I think are important to making this successful. And where, at least from what I've read, other councils have kind of failed because they haven't kept these ideas in mind. One is that we need to be realistic with what we're setting for priorities. And we need to make sure that whatever we're doing fits within the capacity of both staff and our budget. You'll see, well, you saw in the packet and you'll see through our discussion that the priorities that SLT came up with, some have some connection to the CIP, but we tried to stay away from just bringing you CIP projects. And we'll, you know, we'll have time to do that when we look at the budget and the CIP list later on this year. We wanna focus on top priorities. And then if we, you know, complete those in a shorter amount of time than we thought we would, we will continue to work on the other items that are on the list. And we'll talk more about that as we move along. We wanna, we have a process to narrow the list. So you had, I think, 16 priorities. We're also gonna talk about what you all want to get out of this session today, a little bit later on. And some other things may pop up in there, but we need to narrow the field. And I think what we do a really good job at, but what also challenges us is going in a lot of different directions as staff. And I think if we can be focused on a certain set of priorities, a set of goals, and coming back to council regularly, quarterly at least, with updates on how we're doing, that will help us be more successful in the things that we're working on. So we'll talk more about what you're actually gonna do this afternoon, but it is a combination of kind of a traditional dot exercise. And something Julia had brought up, we've been talking about is a dollar exercise, where we were originally gonna give you a dollar to spend on priorities that are outside of sort of our normal operation. So if we had all our operations covered and you had some specific things, how would you divide up that dollar that you had to spend? And so this exercise this afternoon will do both of those things. It'll allow you to kind of pick the things that you think are most important and then give them points to sort of rank them and to see how you would, you know, essentially spend that dollar if you had it. Once we're done with this, the SLT group will essentially operationalize those priorities. So we're really looking for council to give us the high level policy. Where do you want to go? Or do you want to go in this particular direction? Then SLT will take that back and we will come up with smart, smart goals, things that are, you know, articulable, they're measurable, and then we'll bring those back to you. So we want that direction from you and then we'll operationalize that and bring it back to you for review. And again, we just wanna make sure that we have stuff that is measurable, that we can be accountable for and that we can come back to you again, like say every quarter with updates. We're gonna be using a tool, an online tool called Mentee to do this exercise. So Julia, when we get to that point, we'll come up and she'll pull it up on the screen and you have some instructions on the table that'll help you get into that program. And then I'm also gonna spend a little bit of time going over your existing goals and kind of matching them up to the SLT priorities that we provided you in the packet. And other than that, that's all I had. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions for Shannon?
Thank you for organizing it.
The team effort, for sure. All right.
Do we need to have a motion to go into executive session?
Just like normal. So if I can get a motion under 42, or sorry, 2464024B to receive legal advice from your attorney, then we can, regarding general, as Shannon stated, general rules and practices and also the structure of the town charter and code.
I didn't know who moved. Are you moving? I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right.
Exit, executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now out of executive session and we will give staff a chance to come in if they're going to. And we're gonna start goal setting as soon as everybody's seated.
And yeah, we'll get the presentation up on the screen.
This is what happens at home too, all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tons of truth. Perfect. Right there. Thank you. I'm like, that won't stop me. I'll still leave. Up and share.
And then this is our list. Get your list handy.
All right, everybody logged in?
Not yet. I'm trying.
All right.
And is this log into the Mintee thing?
Yeah, you have the instructions on the dais next to you.
Oh, there it is.
So we've set this up so that we're just getting council's feedback and not everyone's feedback. So that's why you have the instructions next to you.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna talk a little bit about what you all want to get out of today. So we'll start with that as soon as I think everybody's logged in. Yes, great. Right, so you have the opportunity on your computers, your laptops, tablets, whatever you're working off of, to enter in as many things as you'd like of what you would like to get out of today. I think in the introduction, I expressed what we as staff are trying to get out of today. But it'd be nice to know what your expectations are for today. So if you would take a minute or two and enter those into Mentee.
In this little box up here?
Yes.
200 characters? Or less?
200, or you could put in, you know, three short ones, whatever your preference is. Who used the word roadmap? Real. Advanced response. Everybody have a chance to submit? Looks like maybe we're still missing one or two folks.
Yeah, he's still working. Okay.
I typed slower than everybody, sorry. What did I do? Oh, well, I did my 200 characters.
Okay. Is that everybody? Steve, are you good? You're good? Okay. So we've got quite a few responses up there, so thank you for entering those. There are a couple, I wonder if we could get a little bit more feedback on Julie, if you scroll up. The review goals align specific priorities, vetting specific priorities and identifying areas that need more discussion. Does anybody wanna chat about what that? Does anybody wanna chat about what that, what you're hoping to get?
Well, I guess the first part reviewing goals, like very similar to what Keely did for us in executive session. It just kind of reset where we are, what our goals have been. So that's what I meant by that part. The next two parts between slashes are really, I think, what you laid out in your memo. And the last point for me was that, of course, we're gonna touch on topics that are gonna need more discussion, but maybe not within this retreat.
Anybody else want to talk about their specific goal for today, what you wanna get out of it, maybe add a little bit of clarity? I know two hundred characters seems like a lot, but.
Just to finish the sentence, I was, I got cut off. Just, just an opportunity to express concerns around unintended consequences.
Okay, so an opportunity to express those concerns.
I mean, just, you know, around current goals, which will likely continue to be goals.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I think I'm hopeful to have something that, you know, and I think we're all unified on our goal here at council, but to have a list of things that we can look back to that kind of speak to that. Yeah, what we're trying to accomplish and that'll unify us for the next chunk of time here to work on this stuff.
Okay. Anybody else? Anyone have anything that they wanted to get out of today that maybe wasn't included in the packet memo or the list of priorities? And it doesn't, I'm not saying necessarily to add priorities, but is there something you were hoping to get out of today that maybe we haven't touched on? No? Okay. Right. So in the packet, I, I hope there was what you think is a pretty thorough memo that talked about, you know, sort of where the goals that you are, you guys have today, what we are working off of today, where that came from. And that was the destination management plan that was adopted. Those goals that were adopted by council in 2019. And that was a fairly lengthy process that the BTO did with the community, with various focus groups to come up with what it is that the community was looking for, for destination management, but also for our community as a whole. And if you recall, that was a time when we had a lot of visitation and people were really feeling like we needed to pull back a bit on that. But a lot has changed since 2019, we had COVID. Right now, we don't quite know where the economy is going. So, you know, a lot is going on or has changed since those goals were adopted. And I think, you know, for our, from our perspective as staff, there's a lot of different ways that we can go with trying to achieve these goals. And so today is this opportunity to hear from you on where you want us to focus our time and energy. I am, I have a PowerPoint up here and go to the next. I'm not gonna run through all the bullets on all these slides. It's a lot of words on, on all of them. But to Carol's point, this is just an opportunity to show you the four goals that you adopted and then the objectives that are underneath each goal. And as in your memo, where you see things in blue, both under, so in this case, providing reliable broadband services, that's part of the goal that you have adopted. Underneath that are the recommendations that SLT had for priorities that are specifically related to this goal bucket. And in this case, the continued fiber development matches a goal that's in there. So those are the, the blue letters. And then when we move on, get a little farther into this, you'll see some things that are highlighted in gray as they were in the memo. And those are the items that SLT prioritized. So just a few things as we go through these that I'm gonna highlight.
And without cutting you off on the story, would this be a time if we wanted to add something to a priority? Example, something other. You have two priorities here, under senior leadership team recommended priority. Would you entertain a third?
I think if you have an idea, we'll jot those down. They won't be part of the exercise we do today because those sixteen are already set. But I think if you have something you wanted us to add, I'll write it down and we'll kind of circle back to it. Did you have something in mind?
Are you, are you gonna go through these?
Yep.
Yeah, then when the right time comes, I would say what I want.
Getting with Peter's dress.
And also to kind of to add to what Steve said, we've accomplished a lot under these four goals, some more than others. And they may not be in some of our minds quite as relevant in the form they were articulated six years ago or five, whenever it was.
Yep.
So hopefully, when Steve gets his chance, we can have some of that discussion as well.
Yep. So I wanted to specifically point to fiber on this. You are going to see on June twenty fourth, the strategic plan, the analysis of, you know, sort of what we've done to date and how successful or not successful that's been, as well as a revised agreement with ALO. So this is a little bit of cart before the horse on this one, but we felt like it was important enough that we needed to keep it on your list for today, even though you can't fully make a decision on how you wanna move forward with it because you don't have the information today. So that's all I was gonna say on this one, do you have any questions?
Are we moving on from a fiber discussion that like shortly, is that kind of what you're alluding to?
Not sure your question, so this, so when we get to the exercise portion where you're doing your electronic dot exercise, fiber development will be one of your options to prioritize. Like I said, you don't have all the information today to make a firm decision on that, but if you think that it's important, you can still prioritize it. That doesn't mean that on the twenty fourth, you may decide to go a different direction based on the information that you get.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that helps, I just wasn't sure if you were gonna like get more details about what you were talking about on the fiber development, but it sounds like that's coming.
It is, I think it'd be too long of a conversation today, so yeah.
Just to share one comment that I had with another council person when we were beating this up, so that everyone hears it. I liked the words that this, the, the, the other councilman sitting next to me used when we were talking about fiber. And he, you know, Todd said, you know, well, really, we're looking at, at reliable internet access or Wi-Fi access, you know, because we don't know what technologies and where they're headed. Is, you know, is fiber gonna always be the end goal?
Yep.
So I like a broader view of that. Is, I think, a good perspective for, you know, us to think about.
Yep, yep, and that's fair.
Yeah, and I think for me, it was more about like, let's make sure we have broadband access. And I don't know if fiber's, you know, digging a trench is not a night way to, to go, but it sounds like we'll get into that down the road, so that's great, thank you.
Question.
Lovely.
Okay, and so then we move on to the hometown feel and authentic character bucket. And that one's really broad, it was interesting, I'm sure you all saw, as we put in the SLT priorities, that a lot of them fell into this space because I think there's a lot you can do under this. And so we, our priorities that were set by or recommended by SLT hit a lot of the bullets that are within this goal. So we can look at those now. All right, so I wanted to just talk for a second on the town's comprehensive plan. We highlighted it, it is probably the number one priority for SLT and it's something we have to do. So, you know, we could have left it off because there's not really that much of an option. The current plan is very, very old and we need a comprehensive plan and we need something that's new and updated. But it also takes a lot of staff resourced. You know, we may use some consultants here or there for different parts of that, but there's a lot that goes into that, including community outreach and that kind of thing. So we feel like it needs to be in here because it's going to take up time and energy and because it's so important. But I, I guess my point is it's, it's not really, it's not really an option. So I guess you could handle that a couple of ways. When you go to prioritize, you could put it at the top of your list or you could put it at the bottom of the list because we have to do it anyway. So I'll leave it up to you guys how you wanna, how you wanna handle that. You know, I think the community outreach goal, one, that was, a couple of council members gave feedback on things that they would like to see on the list and this was one of them, community outreach and, and engaging with the community and doing that in a, you know, I think we've had a lot of improvement in how we do that over, say, the past year and a half, especially since Helen's team has been created and they've really coalesced into being a pretty effective unit. But there's always things that we can do better. And so we brainstormed, you know, educational opportunities, a community academy, ways that we can do community, kind of community building events. So there was, we had a lot of conversation around this particular item. We tried to encapsulate a lot of that into this bullet, but I don't think it fully represents, you know, all that we could be doing. And then we know housing is important, but, you know, I think what it comes down to is we can keep doing what we're doing, or you could say, yes, this is a priority and take it to, you know, kind of not the next level necessarily, but more data and information on what do we need to be doing. You know, we have a housing needs assessment, what is that telling us? Where are our gaps? How often are we reassessing what we need to be doing and what the community needs in this area?
I'd like to see us broaden the research beyond the, the, the housing assessment and bring in market. You know, market analysis of the rental market as, as well as the, for the entry level for sale market. But mostly the rental market. You know, we've got stuff sitting unoccupied for a long time, but the assessment says we're desperately in need, so it's.
Yep, and price has a lot to do with that, but yeah. And I know there was a question someone had about Vista Verde two, that is, a hundred and sixty units are rented, there are twelve that are still vacant, so that helps. Okay, and then we had even more on this. We are going to also be bringing to you some proposals that have to do with childcare centers. You know, we all saw when we went into Little Red. And I, I think, you know, they do a really good job of managing their finances and, and all that, but the buildings themselves need work. And, you know, I don't know that any of them have funding coming in that allows them to develop a reserve that's large enough to handle maybe some of the bigger maintenance projects. So just a sort of a snapshot into what we're going to be bringing you, but we're gonna, we will bring a proposal for a maintenance plan for them. But that said, there's a lot of things we don't know about what we need in childcare. And Kelly and I had a meeting last week with the county and we had a, you know, kind of back and forth discussion about where we think help is needed. But there's not, you know, there's a lot of things we still don't know, like wait, true waitlist and, and things like that. So if this one, again, we can keep doing what we're doing, but if we'd like to take that next step in working with the facilities and ECO to understand what the needs are, that can better inform how we move forward.
So how, I guess I am wondering, because there's nothing in here that just says. I guess I am still thinking that we have two childcare centers that we know we have to do something for. So how do we, or that's not in here?
So I.
What do we do with that?
So I think though, in my mind, those were things that we already had to do.
Are committed to.
Are committed to.
Though we don't need to, that's happening, we don't need to worry about it.
Ah, yeah.
Great, okay.
Yeah. I mean, there are some things like the comp plan that we know we're gonna do, we have to do, and they're still on here. But the things that we're already moving, most of the things we're already moving forward on, we figured we're already doing that, let's prioritize how, the things that we need to look at going forward.
Okay, that helps.
Yep. So the consistency with the code enforcement, you know, my guess is that you, you all are interested in that. That did come from Jay in particular, so I don't know Jay, if there was something you wanted to share on that?
I don't think there's anything that's not pretty obvious, just in general, anything you put on the books that are, that's unenforceable or just choose not to be enforced is just kind of a waste of space. And if anything, it decreases the effectiveness of the other things that are on the books. So just kind of taking a hard look at ordinance that we pass and whether they're enforceable, how they're gonna be enforced. And if there's questions on whether there is a trigger for enforcement, then maybe we need to relook at the, the reasonings for putting that ordinance on the books.
Anybody have any other questions about that one?
When I see consistency of enforcement, it implies to me like, maybe we need some enforcement. And I, the number of times that we heard about the plastics ordinance and the people who were willfully, and I realize there was a reason we weren't enforcing that particularly, willfully knowingly disobey, disobeying that ordinance. And sometimes you just have to enforce an ordinance. When we were walking the town and looking at the, the Blue River revitalization behind Main Street, we don't need dump trucks parked back there and we have ordinances that can deal with that and we should. So that's what I read out of enforcement.
Thank you. Okay. I wanna just chat a minute about the Equity Lens tool. Kelly brought up a really good question this morning when we met, like, aren't we already doing this? And to some degree, we are, and this was actually a suggestion that came from Floor. And, and essentially, it's sort of taking this to the next, again, I keep saying that, taking it to the next level. But some of the things that, you know, she had suggested, if we were to go down this route, that, you know, we would maybe have some mandatory training for council, that we would have an equity impact statement or, and more sections to, sort of subsections to the memo portion of council packet presentations that would speak to more work being done on that, the equity side of things, and then having some metric for both accountability and monitoring of how we're moving forward. So it is, it's not that we're not working on this because we are, but it's, you know, are we ready and do you all want to sort of take the next step with that and do more with it than what we're doing now? And if this, you know, if any of these things fall lower down on your priority list, I think we all know that probably for the most part, almost everything that you're gonna see is, is things that you feel like are important to you. But we can't do everything all at once and that's where that prioritizing comes in. So, you know, if, you know, maybe it is the childcare SWAT analysis, if that ends up being item ten, it's not that it's not important to you, it's just that we It's just that we need to get a few other things done before we can work on that. And we'll talk more about that as we get through this as well. On the transportation mobility side, I think this is pretty self-explanatory. The e-delivery site is on there because I think, well, a couple of things. One, it's, if we're gonna find a permanent site for that, it's going to, it's gonna be costly, right? We're gonna have to put CIP money into that. And we're in a position right now where it's possible that can become part of that, the city market development. Maybe, we don't know yet. And we are probably going to have to have another temporary location. So it is going to take not just CIP dollars, but time and effort and energy on the part of staff. And before we do those things, we know it's successful, but we want to make sure that it is still a high level priority for the council. So that's, that's why that's on there. And then Todd, you had a couple of these, the parking structure in the river corridor. So I don't know if you maybe wanted to chat a little bit about that with council.
Yeah, I'll jump in on both those. Thank you. For the parking structure, was just trying to figure out like, and actually the Riverwalk piece. Like, how do we make incremental improvement each year to, you know, by year five or 10, have like a significant improvement? And, you know, on the parking side, you know, what can we be doing and, you know, testing different things to, yeah, to get that used more and kind of make that, you know, the de facto place where people start to park so that, yeah, it's just used a bunch. And it's like, all right, five's a small enough chunk to, you know, to achieve. So that was the goal there is like, yeah, is it experiment with like the trolley that you've talked about? Is it, you know, I'm sure Matt's got 20 other ideas, but yeah, make incremental improvement there. So over 10 years, you've made significant improvement. And then on the Riverwalk corridor, it was like, all right, that's a big chunk, depending on where the council would want to do the work. But I was thinking like, from Park to, to French, you know, that's like, I think seven tenths of a mile. And, you know, if you do a small little chunk each year and you're not doing a two or a $3 million chunk a couple of years in a row. Like you can, if you do it over 25 years, you can do it with way less capital, but just kind of a steady continual way of like making some real progress there. So that was the hope that, because yeah, some years we're gonna have more CIP to do stuff and some years we won't. But if we do just a little chunk, then over a significant amount of time, we've made progress.
Okay. And then on environment, leading environmental, environmental stewardship. One of the things I wanted to point out is the SLT recommendation on creating a change to the code to incentivize or require electrification and new developments. And this isn't just to meet our sustainability plan goals. You know, Kelly reminded me that not everybody has been involved in the PUC filing for the Mountain Energy project as much as she and I, and none of us as much as Jesse has been involved. But really what this gets to is, are we going to need more gas infrastructure? Are we going to continue to need an injection site? You know, getting to the point where we've reduced our gas consumption enough that we're not causing more infrastructure to be implemented, which then raises the rates for all, all rate payers and certainly the people in our area. And the other piece of that is there's a lot of variability in natural gas rates. And so that impacts the people in our community as well if they continue to stay on natural gas. So this is a bigger, if you decide to go forward with it, it is for a bigger purpose than, you know, now that meeting our sustainability goals isn't an important goal, but it is bigger than just that particular goal. So does anybody have any questions about that? Feel like Dick might have a question.
It's not a question, it's more of a comment. I, I mean, it's kind of tweaking, you know, I, I'm all for having all public projects be all electric. And I'm all for incentivizing. I'm not ready to require.
It's a big legal issue.
Yeah, I think that's fine. This really is, is this a direction you want to go? Then we would come back and have more conversations with you around whether it's incentive, it's a requirement in the number of years, however you wanted to look at that. So we would come back with that if you felt like it was important.
And the information from Excel and like even probably costs, like they've talked about that they don't want to socialize this cost. That would be across all rate payers, but really just give it to the people in our area. And so I think that would be a really important part of our conversation and decision-making is like, what kind of rate increase we're talking? Because it could be very significant. And that information should be forthcoming from this process, which is taking place this summer. So just to know that it's not like years out. It's, you know, a few months away from having some pretty significant information to help us determine what the right next step is.
And then last, we had a couple of things that didn't really fit into a bucket, but we thought were important.
Shannon, can we go back to the last bucket? That's the one I wanted to talk about.
Yes.
I'd like to add to that, adopting a, and this is a term of art, I guess. Adopting an integrated weed management program to eliminate the use of toxic chemicals. And I think it fits well within environmental stewardship in our environment.
Thank you. And you have a presentation on that coming up as well. All right. Okay. So I think I've already mentioned or could have been with my, in our conversation this morning with Kelly and Jay. But staff would like to make sure that they understand, that we understand that the community and council goals that have been adopted are really still the priorities of the community. And like I said earlier, a lot has changed since those were adopted. The DMP is intended to be a 10-year plan. And I have talked to Lucy about, you know, potentially having a refresh or something of the plan. So not a complete redo, but just a sort of touch in and see, is this still what the community is looking for? You know, speaking on behalf of staff, I think that would be really important to understand and make sure that, you know, all the things that we're doing are really what the community wants us to be doing. And, and also because in some cases, even outside of these priorities in our day-to-day operational work, we're still sort of rowing in that direction. And we'd like to make sure we're, we're rowing in the right way. So that's why that item is on there. And I think that is it for the review of the goals. Do you guys have any questions or additional thoughts?
Shannon, when you say staff wants to know if these are still our goals, will that discussion include tweaking them a bit, saying yes, but we want to prioritize parts of the goals more than others?
I think you all can prioritize, absolutely can prioritize certain areas over other areas. My recommendation would be if this is important, we would work with the BTO to figure out the best way to do that. If you want to keep your goals married to the DMP. One of the things we chatted about this morning internally only is these big overarching buckets seem to be pretty stable as far as the kind of things that we think the community would want. It's the items underneath that maybe would, would change a little bit here and there. So, and I think you maybe brought it up earlier, Dick, that we've made a lot of progress on a lot of these things. And so some of them may not be necessary any longer. But I wouldn't, I'd like to work with Lucy on how we do that instead of, you know, kind of doing our own thing and having it be separate from that.
And I think the discussions we've had at the BTO level, they don't want to do their own thing without us either. So in terms of refining, tweaking, whatever.
Okay. Well, now we get to the fun part. So what you're gonna see when we get off of my slide deck here and we get into Mentee are these prioritization options. You'll see that their titles are condensed, which is why you have a, I know we tried to stay away from paper, but you have a printed cheat sheet next to you that has these titles with a little bit of a description next to them. And then the next slides here are probably not that important. They essentially say what's on your cheat sheet. I think, and I'm gonna run through how you're gonna do the prioritization, just so everybody's clear on what that process looks like. But I also want to say, I think you could use the cheat sheet if you wanted to, as sort of scratch paper. And before you enter any numbers into the Mentee system, you could kind of play with how you want to prioritize points on these individual things. So that's up to you. I just thought that might be one way to make that a little bit easier. So Julie, do you want to switch yours? So you're gonna see that list on Mentee. I already talked about the cheat sheet. You have 100 points to use to prioritize these items. When you get to your screen where you're actually doing that, it's, it is a long list. And so you can't see the full list on your screen, which is why we thought the cheat sheet would maybe be helpful in that process. On, you're gonna have a little bubble where you put your points in. On the left of that, and on the right of it, there's an option to do 10-point increments. So on the right, you can add 10 points. On the left, you can take away 10 points. And then in the middle, you can add one, two, three, like point at a time. So I, we're happy to help if that gets confusing, but I think you, once you see it, I think you'll understand, you know, what we're talking about there. We really, really want you to take your time with this and not rush through it. Like I can't stress enough, we are really gonna take this as our marching orders for the next one to three years. And so what you tell us to do today is, is what we're gonna do going forward. So please take as much time as you need. We figured at least 15 minutes, you know, maybe 20, and then we'll go into a 10 or 15-minute break. So take as much time as you want and then break and we'll do some, you'll actually see your results come up on the screen as people start submitting them. Then we'll take that and we'll take probably the top five to seven priorities. And then we're gonna have a conversation about each one of those individually to better understand why you ranked it so high. And that will give us more information to go back and develop the goals.
And Shannon, just to prove I was listening, we don't need to spend any of our 100 points on the comprehensive plan.
If you don't want to, you don't have to.
Well, I'd like to spend a lot of points on a lot of things.
I figured. I probably shouldn't have given that option, but yes.
But when you say if we don't, if we put no points on the comprehensive plans, it's still a
It's a must do.
Yeah.
It's a must do.
I agree with that.
So I think.
Must do ASAP.
Yeah, I think as long as a council understands the importance of the comprehensive plan and we are all in agreement that that is an important guiding document for us and has to get done and will get done. I don't think it's representative of how important you feel it is if you don't put any points on it today. But also remember, it is a resource. I don't want to say resource, but it's going to take resources to do that. So it may slow down some of the other things that.
Yeah, so we probably should just factor it in because then we are all using the points the same way.
I mean, i- if we take the top five priorities and that one's not in the top five, it really becomes the top six priorities.
I'll just add, once you have all your points entered, wait till you enter all your points and then click submit at the very bottom of the screen, but don't click it.
It will tell you how many points you have left, in case you need to know.
If you need help, just call me.
Your screen looks like that and mine looks like this. Shannon, are we not? See this earlier, but there's nothing like transit center or anything like that in there? Was that just not determined that it wasn't a priority in the next three years? Or did we just not talk about that?
We tried to stay away from most of the CIP type items.
Oh. Is that in the CIP?
It was in the CIP. It's pushed out.
Okay.
To future years, so.
Just like we had to turn, we were also confused. You're getting singular points.
Then awesome.
Yeah, I had it ordered too, but I didn't order everything. Like I only ordered my top like, yeah, anything under that. It's just like, whatever. Okay.
Unity building opportunities are the same as improved community outreach.
Very quiet in here.
High old jeopardy.
Old music.
Current stuff.
You're on the iPad. It's better if you switch it this way so you can see.
Screen doesn't look like that at all.
Well, now, once you switch it, it will. Because otherwise it's too small. You can't see the numbers.
Like this.
Yeah. Oh, utilize success. I'm happy about it. It's on here. Patient. You have to switch it so you can see it because otherwise. Because now you can see it. But now you have to start all over. Sorry. This is going great. Okay. I'm going to break you so Julia can come help me. I didn't break you. I just started you. Check the goals. I don't think the parking. There is the parking. There's.
So it looks like equity and parking, the parking structure got left off of this list. So please go forward and, and do it with what you have on the list and then we'll talk separately about those two items.
Oh, she's, she's adding. It worked.
Oh, there it is.
Did? There it goes.
Or it's what?
It's on the list. They're both on the list now.
Parking.
They are now?
Great.
So we change?
Where's childcare? Am I not seeing? Oh, there it is.
It's different though. Yeah, so it is different in here.
It may not be in the same order.
No, it's just that this one says child and programming and childcare programming and facilities support. And this one was more of that. SWAT analysis.
So go off of, it will be what's on this, the cheat sheet. Yeah.
Great. Oh, no. Too much. Mine, yeah. If you turn your computer, then it loses it. Don't turn it. Like I just did it, but I didn't hit submit and it deleted everything. I like the Chris just staying out of it entirely.
He's very smart that way.
I specifically said to them, could you pull something out? I can't see it either because it makes you feel any better.
What those numbers being.
The numbers on the side. So that means the overall percentage of each category.
It's not like the total points.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yep. It was confusing. It took us a while to figure it out.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Now that I saw it that way, yeah.
Yeah, it's helpful.
We use these a lot of CLAs.
I had never used this.
Totally. That's why I didn't vote for one of them. That can be a part of the. Yeah, I thought it could be.
Right, it is. It's not critical. He can, he can wait another 15 minutes. He'll be fine. I think we should do if this. So and we should do.
In the scale.
You should go.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So this is what your results look like. The numbers on the left add up to the 100 points. So that's what they represent over there, the sort of the percentage of 100 that each thing received. So if you guys want to take a break, we're, we're going to plan to discuss at least the first six. And if there are any others on there that you also want to talk about, let us know. But otherwise we'll do down to and including e-delivery.
Inside your parking structures.
Yeah.
And it ends up way down there.
Great.
So, and we are ahead. So if you wanted to take 10 or 15 minutes, that's fine.
All right. We're going to take a break until 2:30. Please, and thank you. One. 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 Two. 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 One. 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 Two.
So what you have on the screen is where you ended up in your voting. Just take one more look at it before we move on and I think, like I said earlier, we're going to take the top seven, six, sorry, six and discuss from housing down to e-delivery. So we'll start with housing and again, using Mentee. So continuing to execute housing programs are was your top priority. And so what we'd like you to do, as many entries as you'd like, is to help us understand why this is a priority for you. And what aspects of it are priority? I think we all know why housing is a high priority, but you know, what about this sort of essential for you? What would success look like? While Dick is adding his thoughts, I'd love to hear on the market data piece. And maybe this is just me needing some more information to understand. What market data would we collect that would help us understand? What housing types and subsidy levels are needed?
So that was me.
Okay.
I think, you know, we have, we received the a needs assessment, right? Showing we need this many, this many of that. And I think that was kind of as far as I wasn't on council at that time when we procured that, but um, that was a consultant that we hired to do a needs assessment. With boots on the ground of, of, you know, our real estate professionals, kind of the, the housing team of be able to say at this, you know, at this level, we, when we go through, for example, when we're talking about housing types at Runway, like, well, we think we need this many townhomes, we need this many duplexes. I think it would be really great to be able to figure out how many families of two are, are, are needing, you know, to look for a place to buy or a place to rent, how many families of three, how many families with, you know, that need four bedrooms and be able to be a little bit more precise with our product mix on each project. I think, and, and then also look to understand the AMI levels that we need to hit. And so kind of really be able to use boots on the ground and to use actual data within the community to understand precisely or more precisely what product mix we need for each of those types.
Thank you. Anybody had any, have any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd love to come in and I appreciate that lens and I'd love to come in even above that to understand how we're, how we're looking, because I worry about the amount of units we're going to lose from folks that have lived in market rate. And those are either, you know, they're going to sell over time, right? As folks exit the community. And then do they get lost to either an STR unit or a second home because of pricing features? So for me, having kind of a roadmap at a map at a higher level of like, all right, what's the number we're trying to get to? How many years does that take to get there? And then what sort of funding do we need to get there? And then layer in what you were talking about Jay of like, once we know the numbers that we're trying to get to, like, all right, by unit type, by AMI, here's how we fill that all in. And oh, by the way, do we have, what sort of dirt do we have left? And I think that helps us inform the new build piece as well as then the housing helps buy down later as well to, you know, when, when do we get to forty seven percent? Twenty, thirty years out.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we have the refined programming, electrical upgrades, maintenance, incentives to downsize, getting runway right. I'd love some more, just some more information on what you're thinking on that one.
Yeah. So that was several things. First runway right in front of us. So of course there's the pressure of getting that as best as we can to serve our community best policy. So that's the immediate one. But in our conversations over the last couple of years, we've brought up different policies, different ideas, maintenance, like how do we further support electrification? That supports the existing deed restricted homeowner who is maybe in a, some of our, those units are what built twenty plus years ago. So making sure that we are supporting those community members and workforce that are in that situation. That was something that came up at our last social equity commission meeting and other things. There was just a couple of meetings ago, we talked about how do we incentivize downsizing so that someone who no longer has a family living with them can free up a unit for a family, but still access some of our programs. So I mean, our housing team has done such an incredible job, but there's certain things that this is a priority because that's the top issue. No, housing is the foundation to just being successful in this community. So ramping it up in, in all aspects, like the policies we've considered exploring. The runway, making sure we're getting it as great as policy as possible. One thing, I don't see that was brought up here, but an additional point is really evaluating the programs we have when we had that Bell policy. Research that was one point that came out, like, we really haven't kept the best track of our housing programs, see who we're serving, are our policies working as intended? So I think there's, there's so much to housing. I'm sure it's the top priority for all of us.
Yeah, great. Thank you. On the STR bedroom fees being used on housing, was there any more to that one in particular? Because we do essentially transfer all of those fees except those that we need for enforcement and monitoring into housing. So I just want to make sure I'm not missing something.
No, my comment was just that that's what we have the SCR fee for. So as long as we've got that fee, we better
Yep.
Or procuring housing.
Okay. Anybody want to talk a little bit more about what they put up there? Okay, and yeah.
I didn't get this on, sorry. But it, it maybe expanding housing helps into a down payment assistance program for the community. I mean, it's really starting to function as that often. But really maybe start, you know, take a formal leap down that road and market it that way. And you know, it's my belief that's a program we need to continue expanding as, as there is demand to meet demand.
Yep. Okay. Anything else on housing? All right. We will move on to community outreach. And I, I think Kelly maybe can speak more to this, or if you enter it in as your comment on why this is a priority. That the track, share and utilize our successes could be rolled into this. So you kind of get a two for one on this one. But if you wouldn't mind entering in some thoughts on why this is a high priority for you and maybe what you'd like to see out of it. And I used exactly two hundred.
I know, me too. I didn't, I just typed in this in it, but I wasn't sure if you had a code something to go, but obviously I'll do it again.
I, I think that's everybody. And so the statement about delivering programs that people want. I guess I'm curious about that one and wonder if someone would expand on that. Which one is that? Delivering programs the community wants.
Oh, no, I don't think.
Nobody's on to that.
Okay. Well, then, very interesting.
They can probably track it.
Okay.
That was me.
Are you gonna pop it up and tell?
An intruder. Yeah. So would you just talk a little bit more about that?
I think being sure that we're providing the kind of housing that fits the greatest need. So we have, we have rental housing and housing programs. We have purchase programs, we have down payment assistance, we have a lot of things. Are all of those things what the community wants? Are we balancing it correctly? I've heard conversations in the community about why do we have so many apartment buildings? People want houses, standalone houses. And I don't know if that's true or if that's one person's view of it.
Right.
And I'd like to know, does the community, even those who are living there now, do they think they're in the right
Right.
program?
Okay. Thank you. And I think this is all, you know, great direction and it is a step from what we are currently doing. Is there any, anything anyone specifically wants to clarify, talk about, you know, make sure we have a good understanding of where you want us to go with this?
I'll provide a low color. I'm sorry, but as far as, I think my, my comment had something to do with getting to people where they are and how they want to be reached, that our, our residents are busy, they're, you know, they're working, they're raising families, they're doing, they're playing their, you know, it's important that we're able to not use a, not that we do, but like a blanket methodology for broadcasting our message, but trying to hone in on more specific ways that people are willing to receive information because you know, in people's lives, they're not always willing to take that extra step to go and find it. Where we need to deliver it in a method that they'll receive it at a time they'll receive it with the information they're looking for.
Do you have ideas how to figure that out?
No, no, that's just, I just put that out there.
Because I totally agree with you. Not sure how to, I, I wonder with my own staff how to do that. Because I've tried to have coffees to talk about housing and all that and you know, and the other day I had a guy that got housing helps. And he, he was telling the rest of the staff, you know, this, this program is so much better than the new stuff because the new stuff, he was trying to say comes with income testing. They'll throw you out if you start making too much money. And, and that's how bad, you know, that's how much misinformation or misconception or, or out there. And he was somebody who, who was a benefit. And he said it in a positive way. It, it just, you know, so I'm going to get with him one-on-one and ask and see if he has ideas how I can at least try to get to my staff and educate.
I was gonna say something along the same lines, which is this is, this seems very much like a partnership between the communications team and council, because this is certainly a role that we should be and can play. I don't, as with everything, there's like not one answer, but I do think this, we were talking about, maybe we could have a regular, you know, coffee talk at the rec center where people know you're going to be there on, you know, Thursday afternoon. It's when they're picking up their kids, they're, or going for a workout, they're already there. That seems like just all of those types of things are what I think we can focus more of our energy on and not. I, I will say that our standalone, standalone functions do not work. I mean, the coffee talks, the way we've been doing them for a long time just don't work.
Yeah.
That's true.
So that's one thing that I, I'd be interested in pursuing. But also I guess what I wanted to say to the communications team is like, we want to know what you think we should be doing. So this is not like, hey, you guys should be doing this, but help us figure out how to communicate with the community.
Great. Thank you.
I think investing in the new community building opportunities is really valuable because to me, that's been the strength of Breckenridge, the community piece and the people for, you know, since the ski area started and that I think when the residents are happy, that has a positive impact on the brand. And so I think building that community and reinforcing that and, you know, as generations change, just kind of pivoting to, to try and match what they're looking for. It's, it's just a really worthwhile investment for us. Just because that's what we're about.
Right.
I mean, maybe we have an work session agenda item with the communications team around those two pieces is community building and, and, and outreach. Because they're similar goals. They're not exactly the same, but.
Yeah. And I like Kelly's pivot to like, how do we go meet them where they're at?
Right.
Because they're not showing up to where we're at.
Yep.
For that specific event.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. You're Julie's got too many a mouse, a computer. Code enforcement. We maybe don't need to talk too much about this one because we have spent a little bit of time on it, but if you have any particular thoughts you want to share, please enter them.
I think timing's important, you know, if you know, how many times are we reminded that we forced them to put in those trees and now their insurance companies making them cut them down? You know, because of fire wise and that it's not entirely fair, but you hear it a lot. And I'm thinking about the comprehensive plan, you know, and, and around SDRs and that kind of stuff. And you know, if we're going to dive into the LUG, you know, the logs and all that stuff as part of the comprehensive plan. Just consider all of that.
Yeah.
In terms of, you know, how we're enforcing, what, what codes we're enforcing, I, we might want to kind of try to understand what codes we may be changing. And maybe take a different approach to enforcing those.
And does anybody have anything else? We don't have to enter it in here. We can just throw it out and talk about it.
I think we need to be careful about not shooting us, shooting ourselves in the foot with our equity lens, because when we're not enforcing certain codes for certain people, it just, it just screws up who is being treated fairly by what code.
And I think as we evaluate code and code enforcement, it's always important to remember that, at least in my opinion, that we don't want to be difficult to deal with, right? Like there's lots of mountain communities and folks can invest and move and live in others. And we just think there's a harmony there of good code, good enforcement, but not so rigid that it's onerous.
Anything else? Riverwalk corridor. Todd had mentioned a 25 year plan. I'm curious for those who prioritize this, why was it a priority for you and what would you, what would you want to see?
Todd and I sidebarred this a little bit by, this is a place where phasing small pieces can make a big difference. And there's a lot of low hanging fruit that we've identified in just walking the corridor. A few times in the year I've been here that we did that don't require us to go into the CIP for big chunks of money, but would really make a, an immediate impact. And I think try to start this vision of, you know, maybe we're not going to build this articulated bridge and underpass right now, but we can build everything up to it. It just requires cleaning out water bushes and, you know, the bank restoration. So I think we have a lot to gain for that. And I think So I think we have a lot to gain for that. And I think in it helps everything about our community because people love the river and they love walking through downtown. And if the back of Main Street looked as good as the front of Main Street while they're walking along the river, it'd be a win-win for everybody. That's what I'd like to see us do.
I guess I have a question with that. How's that different from what we're currently doing?
I'm not sure it is, but that's why I voted for it.
Um, I think it may differ only, well, in that we haven't, we have some money in the CIP and you guys will decide whether or not you want to move forward. I think Shannon, um, was actually getting ready to have another session with you and we wanted to wait until after this exercise was done so that we knew where this particular item fell on your priority list. Um, because it, it could have been one of those that you decided to, to put aside for a little while. So it's important for us to know that you do want to move forward with it. And then I think, um, you know, how many years this project spans will be important as well. And I think that probably would be something that Shannon would get into you on. You know, what things do we want to do? What things do we think can wait? Um, how much money do you want to spend?
Yeah, I think Carol, to answer your question, my hope was that we would all see the value of making the river better. And then by extending the timeline, to me, it made the dollars seem less scary, right? So it's like, hey, over a long chunk of time, we can chip away at this. And if we have good years budget wise, then maybe you can chip away at a little bit more, but over a length of time, let's make sure we kind of cement this investment in the river zone. And, and, you know, down the road, it's, it's evolved immensely rather than just doing like one little chunk and then forgetting about it. So that was kind of my hope.
Uh, okay, childcare. So like I said, you're going to see the maintenance proposals. So those are things we're already working on new agreements for some of the centers. This would be to really do a, um, sort of a comprehensive analysis involving the childcare centers and ECO to figure out where we need. So does anybody have any particular thoughts on that or things they'd like to see out of it?
Can I, just before everyone goes, I didn't vote for this. Um, I know that's shocking. That's why I want to disclose that upfront. I don't believe that this is a town of Breck. The way it is right now written, I do not believe this is a town of Breck. Like project. I really think that ECO should be doing something like this. ECO. And because it should be a countywide, I really don't think that Breckenridge wants another or should financially be responsible for another center. And so if we're, we're already committed to working with the two centers that have already well-established needs that we know about. And so that's why I was very clear before we put this is that those are separate, like Carol said about the Riverwalk stuff, we're already committed to those two things. And so I guess I'm just really curious what people think this is going to look like, because if it's just a needs analysis, we already know there's a need. I don't think we need that kind of analysis. Second of all, I don't think Breckenridge needs anymore, or I mean, there's a need, but Breckenridge probably shouldn't be responsible for another center. So I'm just, I'm super curious what, and then on the flip side of that is if this is like, um, to understand what the existing facilities need in their future, then maybe I would. And so I guess I just don't really understand what this would be.
Um, and you know, it may be my lens on it because I've been involved with ECO and, you know, sort of having the town take, not take the lead necessarily, but give the nudge that it, that it needs. But I think you make a really excellent point that that shouldn't necessarily be the town on that county wide level. I think sometimes we tend to move forward on things because we think it's what any entity, but say childcare centers, what we think they need. Um, and so we could take this to be something that is very local, just with our childcare centers to better understand what it is that they need as opposed to, um, countywide and involving ECO and whatnot.
Thank you.
I wonder if there's value in trying to figure out a way to, 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 to flex space as it's needed at an affordable way. It's not a $10 million investment in a facility, right? Like, are there ways at the rec center or can you build a, a house in the runway development that is used for childcare? But then if that childcare need goes down, it just flips over into a house, right? Like, I just, yeah, I just wonder if there's a way to be really add value, add spaces and reduce that cost per head. And make sure that as new projects like runway come on, that we're kind of set up for success. If there's a, a rush and then what I'd love to avoid is not having folks have to commute down valley or down river to, you know, add an hour to their day or two hours to their day for childcare.
Anything else on childcare or is everybody feel the same as Kelly that working on this is something that we should be doing locally? I mean, we're still working cooperatively and, you know, have a hand in what's happening with ECO, but should our focus be just on our centers and what they need?
Yeah. Cause I think, you know, when you look, I think there's still a whole bunch of, um, opportunities and, um, and issues that are upon us, right? With Montessori school, with, uh, expansions of the existing centers, uh, the aging of others that are, uh, you know, upon us. And then as, as more housing is built, it may change the, the onus on the town to perhaps what they needing another facility. It might not be there now, or it is not there now, perhaps. If we build 150 units that have an average of two new, you know, children per unit, then maybe there is. And so I just think that, I think it is still an important thing to monitor and to understand, uh, where we're at and then, um, analyze what opportunities there are for the, you know, the issues that are at our front door at the moment.
Yeah. I think if we were super successful in the housing front, that usually leads to expansion of families. And then if we don't have childcare, well, then to me, that's like the second step that if we don't address that and thoughtfully, whether it's with ECO or on our own, then we'd, we'd kind of, I think miss the target. Cause then folks will like, if they can't figure out childcare, it's too difficult or too expensive, or there's no capacity, then it's, you know, they leave.
I've been trying to attend some of the board meetings at the local childcare facilities. And I think one of the frustrations they all have is trying to get a real headcount on the needs of upcoming children. It's all centered around the size of the room from the infant on up and how many they can get in. And parents are signing up at every child center and they're, they don't have good numbers. So they're signed up two or three places. When that one of them opens up, they take it and the other two maybe not, don't even know they're gone. But they aren't on the list anymore because they don't think to call back and say, oh, we got a slot at center such and such, so we don't need to be on your list anymore. There needs to be kind of a central repository of how many kids are in the system that need childcare. And that's what I hear. That's the.
Yeah, they, there's no good reason that that doesn't exist. We are five years in the making of that list. No, no clear understanding why it doesn't. I mean, I think the thing that like the important outcome is we know that there is a need for infant up to like three-year-olds. Like there, we could build probably two or three of those facilities. So there's no question about that. And then we know that there are toddler spaces, or I mean, I'm sorry, not toddler, I'm preschool spaces in a number, like all over the place, both in the school system and in the childcare facilities. So it's just a really complicated problem as far as if you open up another facility, those are the expensive ages to staff. And so that's why I'm cautious about taking on, you know, a fifth when we know we have millions of dollars of need in the existing facilities that we have. And that doesn't even include the tuition assistance program, which is $800,000 a year.
Around seven 16, around that, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Seven 60.
In my head, the action plan would line everything you just said out of like what the priority is there of like, hey, remodel. Working on the tuition assistance and then, you know, is it new after that? That to me would be a good use of that action plan to just lay out, hey, here's why we're not, if we are, aren't doing a new one. It's like the money's going here.
And with the childcare centers, the existing ones.
Okay.
I think that would be super informative, you know, when you're down the road.
Communication to the community of why we're not, if that's truly where we end up.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and then the last one that we were going to talk about is the e-delivery. I don't know necessarily that I need a ton more information from you. I think this, having it rank up to the sixth slot in your priority list tells us that you feel like we need to move forward with it. Um, but if you have anything that you want to share, I'd love to hear it.
I didn't, I didn't put this as one of my priorities, kind of like you didn't put the childcare, uh, but I do think that there's also a threshold for e-delivery of, we need to look at how much the distributors are willing to, uh, put in for costs. And we need to understand the, um, the burden on our budget that this is a carry and on our capital improvement plan. Uh, we may love this at, uh, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in operating, but we may not like it at $2 million a year. Um, and I think that this is, it has proven to be a, um, a positive for the community and it has proven to be effective and enhances the quality of life for our residents and our guests. And that's all great, but there, I think there are thresholds that we need to be, um, respons- mutually responsible when it comes to e-delivery and understand what the consequences are.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Anybody else have any other thoughts?
I just asked a question. Are, are there communications going on with, uh, city market space?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that should continue.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Kelly and I met with them weeks ago, last week. Um, and had a good conversation with them. They don't know exactly what their finalized plans look like, but they're open to considering. So.
Do they have a timeline at all?
Um, I think nothing probably before 2028.
Yeah. I think the thing that they made clear to us is that even if they somehow figure out how to incorporate this into their permanent facility, we would need to move off the site during their construction. So that's when Shannon was saying, no matter what, we have to identify another temporary location, if not permanent. And there's, you know, not really clarity on, I mean, they definitely feel space constrained on that location, even before they knew we wanted a e-delivery. So they're gonna, they were really great though, about, you know, wanting to start talking to, um, our planners and community development to understand what our requirements were going to be. Um, so anyway, I think the conversations will start this summer, but no clarity on where that might lead.
Um, so I know we're ahead of time. I don't know that though, that we need to spend time going, continuing on down through the list. Our plan will be to go back to SLT, like I said earlier, and develop goals, specific goals that are associated with each of these priorities, especially those that are at the higher end of your list. And it doesn't mean that the things that ranked lower, we're not going to work on, or they're not important. We will just focus, you know, the majority of our energy on trying to move forward on these top, top set of, of items and then continue to work on the others as time allows. So we will come back to you. I expect it probably, I don't know, it'll be until July or probably July or August, that we'll come back with that set of goals to review with you before, um, we start really moving forward. But do you have any other questions or comments you'd like us to take into consideration? No? All right. Well, then I think we can move forward. Um, I don't know if you all feel like you need a break or we can move right into, uh, the planning commission.
So one, one thing about the, um, projects, I'm wondering if that's something that like with the bar chart that we can actually keep handy so that when we're evaluating projects, particularly during budget season, that we can continue looking back to um, that.
Yes.
And how we ranked it.
Yeah, we can do that.
I don't know if that'll cause more heartache.
But we can also, um, you know, add something to the memo that references the priority that it corresponds to. You know, like we have the goal piece at the top, we could add something. Um, maybe just a written note that it corresponds to a certain priority in that bucket.
Name order. That was for voting thing, but these are your top ten.
So this is just a quick, you know, Julia's quick assessment of, of what that looked like. So we'll, we'll come back to you and we'll definitely figure out a way to bring that to you in a way that you can use it when you're making decisions.
That's helpful. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Want to move on to planning?
I think we can. You guys ready to move on? Any final thoughts? No? Okey dokey. Thank you guys for all the work that went in. I loved that.
System.
Just at the ready mark? All right. Goes back in your regular council packets. Planning commission decisions?
I have a question about one of the decisions. I guess it was maybe the only decision. Mark, it wasn't clear to me. The move, the relocation of the soon to be rebuilt historic structure. Did that create additional parking for the owner or what was the result?
I don't believe it did create additional parking for the owner, but yeah, Chris is agreeing with my assessment. So yeah, no.
So they, there was a parking spot created when the built it, when the shed was torn down and it was paved. Will they be required to tear out the paving so that they can't just continue to use it?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, they're gonna, if there's a parking space there, then that's probably still there.
So they got what they wanted in the end?
After rush. We're good.
Good afternoon. Now, part of the, the remediation is bringing the site back to how it was. So I'll be removing the additional hard surface space in the area that, that was paved. I mean, part of the, where the cabin was kind of in. That was paved. I mean, part of the, where the cabin was kind of in between the two buildings. And just so everyone understands, it's a historic cabin, but it had been moved several times on the site, and that's why it would be eligible if it had not been torn down to be relocated. And that's the lens that the, the planning commission looked at this application through. But in terms of the additional hard surface area, well, it was a condition that that be removed so that. The additional parking space isn't there any longer once it's rebuilt.
Good. That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Good catch. Thank you very much. Good with planning commission decisions? Great. Thank you. Cucumber Creek Estates.
All right, well, this is um, I guess we'll present this to you tonight for second reading, uh, the amendment, uh, the development agreement between. The Q or the Christie Heights partnership, just to extend the vesting of the master plan. There are no changes from uh, first reading on this, on this bill.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Any questions on second reading?
I'm curious, do we have any insight maybe from somebody that's lived on the site? Um, is that land valuable to the Nordic Center? Do we know if. Down the road that if we don't have that lease, i- is it something they're gonna be wanting to, to have?
You know, basically how the, the plan and everything is set up is to have uh, easements. So. In some ways, the most critical connection is somewhat lost by building the road before there was kind of an informal. Network of trails throughout the original site. But there, there are trail easements that ring around the property. I mean, as Gene probably operates there currently, there's probably things kind of scattered all over. Um, so in the long term, if that were developed, they'd probably have to relocate some of the materials, if you will, that are, are there, but. The long-term. I guess impact to the Nordic Center, if it were developed, it would be, I think, fairly minimal. And then also from the lens of impacts to the gulch or view corridors or any of that, you know, it's fairly geographically separated. You know, there is benefit of just not having it built in the short term, but. Relative to the cost of that property, they're probably, from an open space standpoint, there'd be better expenditure of those dollars elsewhere. Than a three acre site that really is the last link of a, it's almost a horseshoe development right now versus kind of a, a donut.
Yeah, and I think my question comes from the lens of like, if it is valuable, then I would want the right of first offer switched to a right of first refusal, but if it can be solvable. And not expensive, then there's no point.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure they were willing, right?
Right.
We asked for a first right of refusal and they said.
Said offer.
They said.
No, ask for extended vesting rights, but it's not even worth, yeah, it's, I think we're good. So thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll see you tonight.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion as to the next item? Cause we're up to runway, right?
Sure.
So the developer's attorney won't be here until four. So maybe we.
Do you want to skip it or should we do like council reports?
Yeah.
Which do you want to do?
Do you want to finish the other legislative items? Then we can do council report?
Skip develop um, the runway neighborhood until. At least four o'clock or whenever they get here, but we'll go on to overnight parking fee changes.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, this resolution uh, updates the parking rate in the airport lot. This rate change is needed as space becomes more limited and the lot is repurposed for the runway neighborhood. Uh, with the housing project, we've, we do have an unmet need uh, for oversized vehicle parking. Uh, the resolution will aid in providing the amenity within the communities. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Questions on this overnight parking? Okay, looks good. Thank you. Intergovernmental agreement with the Summit School District.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, so this is a resolution to approve a IGA with the school district and we started working on this a while back. And basically um, uh, this agreement provides that the school district would transfer ownership of their ten acre roughly parcel out on McCain. And in return for that, um, the town would provide a first right of refusal to um, on the units that are in the runway development. Until the school district gets to thirty five units total. Um, it gets a little more complicated when we start looking at the phasing of our runway project. But with the first phase, um, the same sort of first right of refusal would be in place for the first sale phases. And then if we opt not to move into phase two of development of runway. The school district would still have that first right. They wouldn't convey the land to us um, until they have thirty five units that are occupied by um. Or owned by school district employees in that first phase. Um, or until we decide to proceed with the second phase of the runway project. So. I'm happy to answer any questions. The school district board did approve this some couple of weeks ago at their board meeting.
Thanks, Lori. Any questions for Lori?
Just wanna say thank you to staff for all your work with the school district and getting this across the fence line. I think this is a huge win for. Town and the school district and the community as a whole. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That was a big one. Yeah, as I read that we would get perpetual, I didn't see any limits on the use. In that period, if we, you know, until we decided to move forward with phase two.
Yeah, the uses are um, uh, governmental uses, including parking, storage, governmental uses.
That's great. All right.
No, I thought it was great too. It's good.
Cool.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Do you want me to move on to the manager's update or do you want me to circle back and do?
We can, we can move on to the manager's update. We were going to do those as um, memos only, but since we have time. We can have folks come down.
Public projects, Shannon. Everyone's happy that the roundabout's back open, better than ever.
I am also very happy.
I'm sure.
Thanks for holding. Here, um, I just put in a couple of quick updates on what we have under construction. We do have a lot of other design projects that we're working on. That we will bring to you in the next few meetings, including a lot of great stuff we've been doing with the Blue River Pathways project. I'm glad to see that had a lot of support still. Five more years. But I'm happy to take any questions, I mean, that we've been working on or any construction.
Questions for Shannon?
Any surprises on the Colbert Project Warriors part?
So many.
Any, any big, any big costly ones?
Um, that we haven't come across any. Costs that we can't cover in contingency yet. We kept a robust contingency, knowing that we were gonna get into a lot of what we call unsuitable soils. Um, so that road is basically full of trees and giant boulders and as we. Dig the waterline, we're hitting a lot of unsuitable material that we have to pull out and um, backfill in with well graded structural material. So been hitting a lot of that, but we have it covered for now. I'll let you know if we start coming up against that approved budget, but. For now, we're okay.
That's how they built roads back there, wasn't it?
A bulldozer and just smash it all in there.
Is that your work?
Questions for Shannon?
I, I've gotten a couple of comments and just uh, love a, an answer to be able to provide uh, people with. The airport road currently is a staging ground for, it looks like a lot of fiber and, and backhoes and stuff, and there, there's been comments that it is not the most. Uh, welcoming entrance to the town. Is that playing on? Like, will that be staying there through the phasing of, of runway and like that be in the later phasing or is that? And where will it move to and will it be visible and all that good stuff?
Okay, so right now, a lot of different town projects do use Airport Road for the laydown. And we have not replaced that function in equal size over at McCain, but McCain will be the area that we have to do those functions. Such as the air, um, the asphalt piles and the concrete and the fiber storage. My understanding is once runway launches, um, they will be using that area for staging for their own project. So I think we will continue to see equipment. Out there, but it will be equipment dedicated to the housing project.
Understood. Thank you.
Which, so are you saying the parking lot that we currently have at McCain, like that was created on the east side of the road? Or are you talking about closer to the? Um, river and on the river side? Which side are you talking about that would become construction staging?
There are a couple of large tracks that are for public works to uses. Right now on the east side, there is the well material, um. The spot with the well grading material on top, the rock, kind of adjacent to where the horses were.
Yeah.
That's our primary location for public work storage.
Okay.
If we have a big project, we could have the need to get into what we plan to use for the snow storage. We could see laydown needs there. Because we use. Good ten fifteen acres on Airport Road at times. So if we have another big roadway project, we may need to start on both the east and the west, but we'll prioritize on the east where it's more hidden.
Right. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The trees.
Mobility.
Hello again. Uh, you unfortunately get me for mobility and sustainability today.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I have nothing further to add to mobility. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
Matt, this isn't like mission critical, but since we have some time, you mentioned a few weeks ago that the e-bikes are now, you have to be eighteen to use the. E-bikes, right? And last summer you could be six. How is that like? Handled by the app?
That we're learning it's, it's handled as, as uh, the contractor would like it to be, but. It's required that you have to submit a photo ID of some sort. We're obviously seeing that's not one hundred percent successful, so.
Yep, Mariko, just I'm curious, is there something specific you've seen that?
No, I haven't seen anything. Um, I was just sad that sixteen year olds couldn't rent them this year. But there's work.
Anything else? Mobility. Um, I was just curious how, I couldn't remember how many more um, docking stations we had this year. It seems like a lot. Do you know off the top of your head?
Uh, you, I just totally forgot. I think it's only five. I can't remember exactly.
They're very strategically placed.
Yes.
Well done.
Can't remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
That's fine. No worries.
Yeah, it does feel like there's a lot more out there.
They're just all in the right places, I guess.
Yeah, I think it seems to be working pretty well. I think the weather is definitely having an impact on the leadership right now, but.
Not for Carol.
It's still up twenty one percent.
All right, great. Onto sustainability.
Any questions? I don't have anything else to add there.
All right, sustainability was pay as you throw, commercial composting. Dark sky takeback. Ice shrink solar, mountain energy project update. Thermal energy networks, gas planning pilot. I think while we're in here, I'll just take the second to remind everyone that it's town cleanup on Saturday. And that there's always the huge recycling event with, I don't know where it is actually. Does anyone know off the top of their heads where?
Some of the county.
It's at the county common, yeah.
Okay. So your electronics and batteries and everything can be recycled over there. But thanks for everybody participating and then you can come have hamburgers. At the Riverwalk Center. Anything? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't, we did not have any open space or housing. Um. We can go into the developer agreement or we could finish financials and then go back.
Let's, uh, I mean, is everyone, what do you want to do?
I was gonna say, let's finish financials.
Okay, great. So if you um. Just wanted to make sure that everybody in the public knew because probably not everyone's reading. The summit stage board packet, but there is information on the RTA in there, which is pretty interesting. And um, worth knowing about. So that's moving forward and then we'll do financials. Pam and Dave, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have the report that covers the four months of twenty twenty five. April is reflective of March sales tax collections. Overall, we're approximately nine hundred thousand above our twenty twenty five budgeted revenues in the excise fund and behind two hundred thousand. Sales tax is currently a hundred thousand behind year to date budget and behind half a million in comparison with prior year. Accommodations is taxed as flat in comparison with year to date budget and behind two hundred thousand in comparison with prior year. Real estate transfer tax is ahead eight hundred thousand in comparison with budget and ahead a hundred thousand in comparison with. Prior year. Our net taxable sales year to date as of March of twenty twenty four are behind four point fourteen percent. Just looking at the month of March, um, overall, it came behind at five point eleven percent, seeing a slight decline in all of our categories except for construction. Um, we do have the first quarter of the disposable bag fees as well on there, showing a decline in comparison with twenty twenty four. Our retail in town for the month of March in comparison with twenty four was behind thirteen percent. Retail out of town in comparison with March was ahead two point two percent. Real estate transfer tax for the month of April was behind fifty four percent in comparison with twenty twenty four. Um, and that is really due to timing. Um, it seems like since I've started here, there's been one commercial, commercial um, transaction happen every year. And so we can see that that commercial transaction in twenty three happened in September and in twenty twenty four, we see it in April. And we had one in February, and so it's really just a timing of those commercial transactions coming in through for real estate transfer tax. Um, and I can answer any questions before I pass it on to Dave.
Thanks for that, Pam. That really is interesting about the one commercial per year helps us kind of picture that. Any questions for Pam? Great, thank you.
Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the financials for the year to date, this is through April. We're about four point eight million favorable on revenue. Really, I'll say three of that, three million of that's not related to phasing. Uh, one is our investment income return. We're about a million favorable year to date. Um, as Pam mentioned, our real estate transfer tax is about eight hundred thousand favorable year to date, and then we received our. Uh, utility co-op river payment earlier this year as well for just over a million dollars. On expenses, we're showing favorability of about six point three million year to date, and most of that I'll call right now. Is phasing related to the capital projects that are currently going on and we'll kind of see where the dust settles. Uh, when Tracy gets back from London, we will be meeting in June to go through. Updating this with the forecast view we talked about last month to include cash flow as well. So you might see a different view next time. Okay, any questions?
Questions for Dave?
I can see you. You're blurry.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Any questions for Dave? All right, thank you both very much. Okay. We're ready for the developer agreement for runway neighborhood. First reading. First reading.
Oh, good. All right, good afternoon again. So you all have seen this, um, agreement with the developer a couple of times. Um, but we have scheduled this for first reading, um, tonight and, um. As a result of conversations over the past, uh, month or so, um, have made quite a few, um, edits. To the original draft that you saw. Um, so what I'm gonna do is, um, we did attach a clean copy and we also attached a redline copy just so that you could, um. Uh, see the, the changes and I, I'm gonna go through the most significant ones. And then we can sort of open it up to questions, um, but, um, and I think, um. The developer is out of town. Suzanne is out of town. Unfortunately, she had plans to not be here, but Felice is here. Um, and Tim is going to. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, Tim is gonna call in, but unfortunately he's very unwell today, so. We will, he'll participate as much as he can, but I, I think I can go through the changes in the development agreement that came about as a result of our previous conversations. So first one, um, we were able to add a seventy thirty, uh, developer incentives. The goal of that obviously is to hopefully see some, um. Improvement in some of the cost areas and if there are improvements, then, um, we both benefit as a result of that. So, um, that was added into, um, section, I think it's two E developer incentive at seventy thirty. Seventy percent of the savings come to us and thirty percent of the savings go to the developer. Um, next sort of significant change is, um, some of the phasing. Um, we definitely added some, um, checks in there in terms of the, uh, the. The ability of the town to review and approve pricing. And, um, I think he always put in specifically that the town must affirmatively approve the project budget and GMP. You know, prior to the start of infrastructure and then again, prior to the start of each vertical phase. Um, and that should be done in a public meeting, um, so that it's a more formal process than it just coming to us. Um, and that applies at the start of each phase and totally reduces the risk to us and to the developer as well. Um, section seven, we made some changes in terms of the draw process. Again, this is really about our level of oversight and processing, um, the draw requests. Um, and you know, we will, you know, it protects the developer as well in terms of, you know. Our process is more defined in this agreement than probably in any previous agreements that we've done, but. Um, basically, um, monthly draw processes are processed and bills are paid for work that's been completed. Um, and, um. You know, if, if we decide sort of to, um, uh, stop, um, I think, um. Uh, the developer is compensated for costs incurred to that date. But this section does spell out, you know, how we're gonna pay subsidies as well. Um, that's based on the units for which building permits are issued. That's a vertical subsidy. Uh, we did revise the schedule to, which is exhibit B. Um, that includes now, um, all of the steps that, um. Uh, sort of we consider to be the key milestones in terms of, um. You know, when the initial sales are gonna start, when the next sales are gonna start, um, when we're gonna see budgets. Um, that schedule really includes, um, the steps, um, that are related to the project in general. It doesn't include our weekly, um, budget meetings with the team or our quarterly reports that we're gonna get. So it's mainly sort of the bigger milestones, but as you look at that, there's a big gap, for example, between January of twenty-six and June of twenty-six. We still have our quarterly meetings and our weekly check-in, so this is more a list of the sort of milestone projects, not necessarily our oversight of them. Going through the list in the memo, um. So, um, sec, transferring the property, that's another area where we made a significant change to how the project will, um, unfold. Um, and, and as you may recall, the original sort of concept had us conveying, um. The property, at least the first phase property to the developer pretty much right after we execute this agreement. Um, now to provide a little more sort of comfort. Um, that conveyance won't happen until I think it is. Fall, um, and that's after another budget check, so it gives us a little more time to, you know, we're in June now. Um, you know, we think we know where the numbers are, um, but we're gonna be rechecking those numbers. All the way up until we do convey or transfer the ownership of the property in the fall. Next change. Is to, um, section sixteen developer fee. Um, you know, this was a focus of a lot of discussion, um, and the developer has agreed to reduce their fee. To four percent from seven percent. Um, I think it is important to, to note that, um, we did have the budget reviewed by a third party. And, um, that third party, you know, did tell us or gave us some advice that, you know, four to seven is pretty much the norm. So now we're on the low end of the norm, um, but our fee also includes the only salary that the developer will actually collect on this. Previously, that was in soft costs and that's actually where our third party said it belongs. Um, it belongs up in soft costs and also with a fee on it, but I, um. The developer in this case has agreed to, to go down to four percent. That includes her salary, so nothing else. Um, section twelve, I might have skipped over that one and that's an important one, act- actually. It's important test, but it's also important to the developer. That's the one you guys have weighed in generally on the. Developer unit, I, I think initially there was a request for three units, then it went down to two units. Um, there's still a request in this current version, um, that is important to the developer and that's for one unit in the first phase. Um, and we have, you know, talked with her quite a bit about that and. We're convinced that it provides a significant benefit to the project, which is why we are like, keep it in there. We'll see what council says. Um, to have somebody that's running the project actually live on the project. To be able to react to situations and complaints and, um, just to be that sort of, um. Involved in the project, um, is for us a benefit, makes the project more successful. Faster response times and, you know, just a, a significant commitment to the project from that employee, so. We, we included it, but obviously up to you all as you go through all of these changes to decide what stays in, what stays out.
And just before you move on back to the fee piece, I just wanna highlight that. The structure also changed, so it's not a straight, you know, going from a seven percent to a four percent. There were expenses included in that seven percent, so it's really was a change of philosophy also on how that was applied and. We believe and our third party evaluator believes this is a much more transparent way to handle the fee.
Um, not in my memo, but I did wanna highlight, um, uh, number thirteen in the agreement. That's the restrictive covenant and, you know, by deferring the transfer of ownership, we also don't have to have the deed restriction done right now. Which gives us a lot of time to work with the council on the terms of the deed restriction, because this comes up time and time again, um, you know. Issues that were raised about, you know, owning other property or the, um, higher priced units, but not for the lower priced units. Does that stay in our deed restriction or is it something we should relook at? Um, in contesting is always something that we wanna look at, so. It gives us some more time to work with you guys on the terms of the deed restriction, because it would just need to be recorded at the time we do the conveyance of the land. So, um. Section twenty-three warranty, the developer has agreed to go to a two-year warranty. Again, this is not, um, sort of the standard in a construction project, standard is one year, so. We feel very fortunate to get a two-year warranty on this. Um, uh, there are, I have to go back one more time, sorry, section twenty, there were some changes. Um, to the sale process, we, we found that, um, in Staples Village that sometimes the developer was having to own. Or hold on to units, um, long after they had CO'd because the first person opted out or fell out and. So that's an issue that was apparent in Staples Village and in this case, we wanted the developer to have some options. The unit is done, it's been sitting, um, and, um, it's taking some time to go through that lottery list. It's not like there's not a long list of people that want those units, but it does take time to go through and vet those and sometimes. Um, if somebody drops out too close to the CO, the developer can end up owning it for a while and so. Under the, um, current draft of the agreement, um, the developer can rent it. Um, they can offer it to the town to purchase or the, or if it, we happen to have gotten through that whole lottery list. Then the, um, developer can sell it to qualified, um, buyer, so it's just some process to prevent that from happening again. All right, uh, get myself back in order. So twenty-three E, um, there were some changes to that section also. This is more about us having our regular quarterly meetings. Um, now that's gonna be in addition to sort of the regular OAC owner, um, architect and contractor meetings that are more on a weekly basis. Um, that we'll be attending and the goal of all of that is just to sort of. Make sure that if there's anything of concern that would impact price or schedule, that we know about it sooner rather than later. So we're monitoring that all through the whole process. Timeline, we did put a timeline in twenty-three F and this is just to make sure that the project keeps moving along. Um, that there aren't any sort of long delays, um. And that the projects, um, get completed within eighteen months is sort of the framing, just to keep it moving. There was nothing else in our contract. Um, that kept it moving forward. Twenty-three E, this is about financial records, um, we modified that so that, you know, we have access to. All the financial documents, the only thing we really, um, felt like we didn't need, um. Full access to were some of the developers' personal financial information, so there's some language in this section. That gives us access to loan agreements and details of encumbrances, budgets, all the financials, but we really don't need. Their financial confidential information, so that's.
And that's actually twenty. Twenty-three E, I think. That actually is, uh, fifteen, so that got changed a little bit.
Fifteen.
Yep.
Some additional language under terminations, um, kind, all sorts of opportunities for termination, but termination for cause. Um, if we terminate it, um, the, um, developer sort of, um, gets reimbursed for, you know. Things that they've acquired that we haven't already paid for in some way. That, that just seems fair. If we, um, just terminate it for sort of no reason, I guess convenience, um, is not for cause, but. We also have to reimburse for costs and expenses incurred. Included the indemnification language, um, included a resolution dispute language that came out of one of our early, um. Meetings and then the last thing in my memo is just the deed restriction that we will be working through with you all. Don't have to have that done until, um, we convey the land. So that's a quick summary of. A lot of edits that took us some time to work through and appreciate. Felice and Suzanne for working with on this. It took some definite, and Keely. Sitting down and crunching through these, but I think all in all, this agreement is in significantly better than the one presented. Two months ago, um, there's a lot more sort of due diligence and checking and just. Putting it in an agreement as opposed to just assuming it will happen, so. I'm here to answer any questions. Our goal is to, um, if you're comfortable, um. Have the agreement approved on first reading, um, and then we would be back in a couple of weeks for second reading.
Great. Questions for Lori and Melanie?
How will, um, change orders be handled? I didn't say any language at all about change orders.
The change orders, orders will be part of the GMP contract, um, so once, you know. If, if this is approved, then we actually execute a formal GMP gross maximum price contract with Suzanne. And that, um, agreement has a provision for change orders that's pretty standard.
Yeah, so the, that's for horizontal. When we go to vertical, I did actually, I have, we do have two sort of last minute ads. Um, one is in section two in D and budget, which does say that. After final authorization, the budget may be further revised to reflect modifications to the development plan, but such revisions shall only take effect upon town council approval. So that means we can't, staff can't go above the budget, right? Without coming back to you guys, so other than that. Um, change orders should be handled, um, within the contingency, right? So if there are change orders that need to happen during vertical construction that are within the budgeted contingency, then it's, it's fine. If there are change orders that happen as a result of us asking for different, something different, then we will. Or them, either, either side, we will have to come back to you guys and get you to authorize a change to the budget.
How will the change orders affect the seventy thirty split? I mean, how will they work together? Will all the change orders be in and out of the contingency?
So the can, the incentive does not include the contingency.
Right.
So we already have that language so that if there's change orders, there's no. The increase the, right, if there's change orders that eat into the contingency, then the seventy, I mean, there would be not a cost saving on that, right? So those things don't.
Okay, so it's all in and out of the.
Yeah.
The contingency.
Yep.
And there's no ability to pull from contingency without having the conversation and then showing that in the budget as a change order.
Right.
Out of contingency with a line item documented.
Got a couple of questions, um, thanks for all the hard work on this. I'm excited to get runway built, um. Definitely want some clarity on, on some items, um. I'd love to understand, so the incentive that's being proposed. It's applied to which budgets, like, is there a process to formally approve those that staff does or council does?
Um, it, right now it will be on staff, but it's calculated and paid out at the completion of each phase. So, so it'll be calculated and paid out at the completion of horizontal phase one. If there's a horizontal phase two, it'll be done then and for vertical phase one and vertical phase two, so it'll happen at each stage.
Pay out.
Yep, and calculation.
So then when are the budgets built? So like as an example, we've got exhibit A here with infrastructure at twenty-two million four eighty-five. Um, is that the proposed infrastructure budget that, that would be measured against?
Well, no, so you guys haven't approved the budget yet. The budget is gonna come before you, the final budget for the GMP agreement.
Yep.
Will come before you at the second reading and the reason for that is because the developer is currently negotiating with. The, you know, with contractors for the GMP and if we give you the final numbers now, we will never get a lower number.
Yep, no, it makes sense, yeah, good, and so they're being bid out, so that's good.
Yep. And then there will be another budget for vertical phase one and another budget for ver- or horizontal phase two and another budget for vertical. Phase two.
Do you have another totter?
I'm curious, the exhibit A is. Helpful to understand. Um, it's challenging to kinda. Way the value, because there's no, I don't have square footage in there and. On this is, you know, we've been getting, um, and, and the scale of it's so big, right? Like we've got a hundred and fifty million dollars we're trying to evaluate and make sure that, you know. My intent is that we get this built, it's also my intent that we're super thoughtful with every single housing dollar, right? Because if there's three million of savings or five million of savings over a hundred and fifty million, like, that has tremendous impact. Or another ten, fifteen folks looking for housing, so my hope is that, uh. To, to, to understand these details, um, so it's hard with, as we've gone through this process, right, of just not having the full.
Hmm.
Kind of picture, so exhibit A is just tough for me, because I'm, I see the dollars on there, um. You know, and I see a three percent price escalation, but I, I just don't feel like I have the whole. Picture.
You don't.
Yeah. So that's.
To be perfectly honest, you don't. Sorry, go ahead, finish.
No, I, I, that's just for me a little bit. Nerve wrack, it's, I think, is this the biggest spend the town's ever made, a hundred fifty million?
Well, well, it's not a hundred and fifty million of our dollars.
Sorry, the, the fifty, but is this the biggest project we've done?
Hmm, biggest housing project, but it's equal to the north, uh, North Water Plant.
Okay, yeah.
I would just say. I would just say you're, you're not wrong. Part of that is the way that this, we've now broken this out to give you guys the opportunity to make those decisions. So you're not getting the whole, you're not actually deciding on the whole amount right now. All you're doing with this is you're deciding on the structure. And then you have all of these other decision points. So, you know, next, if, if you guys go forward with first reading tonight, at second reading, you will, you know, this developer agreement will be in place. And you will have then the opportunity to decide on the GMP agreement and the budget for horizontal infrastructure phase one only, right? So you're not even looking at numbers for vertical until the fall. And then you will look at vertical numbers in the fall and discuss whether or not you're ready to go vertical, whether or not you like those numbers, whether or not you like the, you know, the unit mix and the square footage and all of that. So you're not authorizing moving forward with any of that until it's, this is a piecemeal approach and the way, the reason why we did it this way was in response to all of your concerns about not wanting to, to move forward right, right now and not wanting to authorize the whole thing. So you're not, you're only authorizing it in pieces.
In section five, thank you.
Yeah.
I think that's a thoughtful way to proceed, right? Because it's, it's just, it's a lot, right?
Big, yeah.
In section five, it talks about the first phase being eighty-one. Is there any concern? Because I think that commits us to doing eighty-one, right? Is there any ability to maybe?
Doesn't yet.
Doesn't?
No, not yet. Yeah.
The layer in sub, like sub phases of that to kind of go a little slower if market conditions or you know, there's, there's, there's a need to go a little slower and do, say, chunks of twenty-five or thirty?
The master plan does have a minimum, I just, of, I she's not here. I want to say it's like one forty-six total on the overall parcel. So we have to be very conscious of that as well, that if we tick down two units in phase one down to seventy-nine, we have to add those on the backend. So
I think he means like, can we, can we phase this even more?
Yeah.
The sale phases.
No, construction phases.
Construction and sale, just to, like, is there a way to have the flexibility to slow the pace if we need to?
We do have that flexibility. I think the way this is set up currently, if we wanted to stop in the middle of the vertical phase and just stop, we would do that, but there would be a slight penalty. Because, you know, by doing that, you're losing all of the savings that the developer has baked into. You know, we're asking her to commit to commit to a guaranteed price for the vertical, you know, once we go and authorize that vertical construction in the fall, we're asking her to commit to that, this is how much the budget is and that's all she can spend. If we then halfway through say, ooh, actually, we don't want you to keep going, she loses out, right? She doesn't get, she can't finish the project and then she's not also able to do any other projects because we had, she thought she was locked up to do this project. I'm not going to speak for her. I don't know whether she'd be willing to cut it into smaller phases, but that's how it's currently set up. It's also something we can talk about in the fall when we're looking at preliminary pricing to see, does it make sense to make smaller phases? I don't know. Do you have anything to add to that?
Can we have Elise come up?
Elise, can you come up to the mic? Sorry, other people can't hear you. Not loud enough.
Okay. I can't speak for Suzanne or, or the developer totally, but I would think, Todd, there would be some issues on the loan because we're getting a loan for the whole phase one. And so to stop the project midway, you know, I don't know how that would play out with the lender. But it could always be done. There is a mechanism to do it. It's just, would be harmful.
We'd need to know in advance. So I think if we wanted to do that, the time to, to look at that would be in the fall when we start looking at preliminary pricing.
Correct.
Right, then, and thinking about whether or not we want to break it into even smaller chunks, we can do that. But we would want to do that then. I would much prefer doing that than to go forward with vertical phase one and then just stop for some reason in the middle.
To be clear, what's, what's your goal?
And I think my concern is like market risk, right? Like if you're rolling out eighty-one units, that's a lot of units, right? And if there's turbulence, like to me, I think a smaller number is a little bit conservative approach to, you know, you're committing to the build out, like you have the infrastructure on the ground, right? So you're committing to the build out, you're able to sell those. And then if there's market turbulence, you don't have forty-eight projects going with cancellation. So kind of I'll, phasing it with smaller chunks and then being rapid with the approval of the phases if everything looks good around the corner. That's kind of where my head goes, right? Like
I, I think that's how it's going to work in practice, right? She's going to be building, she's not going to build all eighty-one all at the same time, right? This is like a two to three year sort of build out for the eighty-one units. And with all of the price checks that we're going to be doing, you know, constantly basically with her is we're going to be looking at market absorption and she's going to be looking at that because she's the one who's got the risk in terms of selling them. So, you know, I think there's a good balance there, but that being said, again, we'll have that opportunity to look at that. And if there's something that makes everyone nervous in September, October, when we're back looking at vertical pricing for phase one, we can, we will have the opportunity then to, to sort of look at that. And maybe she doesn't take out the whole loan for the full eighty-one build out. You know, there's, there's a lot of options and opportunity in there to change things.
I think it's risk on her part than it is on our part because she has to be able to sell those units to get her money back. So I would think that the developer would be very thoughtful about those market conditions as well.
Yeah, I think I just worry about the penalties on, you know, if, if we go too fast, right? For the town, I worry about the penalties on that side, you know, depending what they are.
Yeah.
If we need to slow it down.
Well, I think, I think, you know, as we've talked about this, it actually really does, there really wouldn't be a penalty for us, right? We would probably say, keep building. And, I mean, not probably, we could say, keep building and sorry if they, if the market can't absorb it, that's not necessarily our problem, right? That's not, I think, how we normally would do business, but that would be the, that would be our remedy in that situation. We wouldn't be the one saying, stop building. She would be the one saying, this isn't working, we need to do something different. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It really wouldn't be on us.
I think I just worry about committing to eighty-one and her go under approval on eighty-one. Again, it's just, it's a huge number.
And I think, so just to give you guys more clarity on those quarterly check-ins, that is kind of, okay, what is drywall doing? What is steel doing? What is lumber doing? I mean, that is all encompassing of what the current state of the market is. So in reality, like in a three-month shakeout, I know there's been a lot of talk as to what has happened over the past six months. It hasn't been as dramatic in, in construction. It, it's been blips and then down and then blip. So we're maybe like two percent higher, but it's not like this dramatic increase, right? So you, we'll start to, if we start to see it in those quarterly reports we're receiving, it's like, okay, hey, what's, you know, drywall's taken up five percent every time. I mean, that's where we start to reel back into the concern level and so we'll have real market data on top of that. Obviously, the uptake is a little bit different, but in terms of the cost of building the units, we'll have good, good data on that.
Thanks.
Melanie, wouldn't you assume that Suzanne is going to her suppliers and saying, I'm going to commit to you for eighty-one, the equivalent of eighty-one? And so she has an incentive to keep it within that.
Correct. So for example, when there was the discussion about lumber tariffs, a lot of the cassettes, which are the panelization of the construction stables, are sitting out on Airport Road and an Airport Road shop for the rest of the project. So a lot of that stuff is pre-purchased months in advance, similar to kind of how we had to approve the modular project, obviously on a smaller scale though.
So best, best case scenario, this appears to be a from, you know, if we're, if we're asking to approve this now, best case scenario, phase two vertical will be complete at the end of twenty thirty-one. Is that right? So six years, basically?
For phase one?
It, it says phase two, but it seems pretty quick for, for phase two, but that's what the schedule says right in front of me. Says March twenty thirty, phase one, and it says December twenty thirty-one for phase two. It seems I, I
Yeah, we had phase one delivering twenty-eight and twenty-nine, and then phase two delivering thirty, thirty-one-ish.
Yeah, but that's only if it's authorized.
Yeah, I mean, if it's authorized, yeah, yeah.
So that's best case scenario. And if we decide to slow down a little bit or, or market conditions force us to slow down a little bit, we, we could be talking seven, eight years.
If we slow down, yeah.
Which is probably likely. That's a long time to, to, you know, be asked with so little information right now around unit size, square footage, number of bedrooms, number of bathrooms. Really tight budget that everybody's willing to commit to. And, and we're being asked for the, to, to commit to the structure of a deal. And I mean, it's not just the developer's four percent. This is the structure of the entire deal that we're looking at for eight, up to eight, nine years. That's a big ask that, that I'm really struggling with. I just don't think that's how we want to do this. I, I'd be much more comfortable and I don't know if anyone has an appetite for it, but to shift gears a little and, and try to really focus on the infrastructure and get, get a contract done for the infrastructure because it sounds like that's what we're really feeling a need to get going for these grants and such. And then maybe spend a little more time on this structure for, 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 that we're going to be committed to for the next eight years and for a tremendous amount of money. I, I just, you know, I've expressed this over and over and we're not getting a whole lot more information. So I, I just, I don't know if there's any willingness to shift gears and and kind of focus just on the infrastructure for now. I tried to get a contract done on that and and then spend a little more time on the rest of it. It's eight, eight, nine years, a long time. And this is a lot of money.
Keely, can you just help verify? This is only for phase one.
Correct, but we would ideally revisit it.
But the developer agreement.
The developer agreement.
We're talking about
Yeah.
The whole.
It would be the whole thing.
That applies to the entire thing.
Yeah.
So it could be eight, nine, ten years. So that's what we're being asked to approve today.
I think, um, Keely and I, Keely and I, when we all talked about this, we're feeling that at each of the phases, what, you know, whether it's horizontal or vertical, we're going to be probably amending the developer agreement along the way.
Yeah.
So this is providing a structure and then you're just
Yeah, it's too much money to, 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 to vote for a probably going to. I mean, we have no right to in this agreement.
Right, well, Keely, I'll let you answer the
Yeah, but you do have the right to not spend the money.
Sure we do, with a lot of penalties.
No, not with, with, if, no, if you're, if you're, there's no penalties.
For whatever costs she's already incurred.
Penalties if you're, if you're, if you're just going in accordance with the agreement. Yeah.
I'm, I'm just expressing my uneasiness here.
And maybe, Keely, that would be helpful. So say, for some reason after infrastructure that we don't feel good about the project market conditions, like you're telling us that within the structure of the agreement, we have built in all these checks and balances. So without incurring any penalties, additional fees,
Yep.
that's what's written into this agreement, that we have these checks, right?
The agreement has multiple decision points for the town, at which point under the terms of the agreement, if the town chooses not to go forward or we don't get agreement between the parties on the budget for any of the phases, we don't go forward. And there's no penalties. We just have to pay what's been the work, only for the work that's been done up to that point. The only penalties are if we stop, we just sort of decide that we're halfway through vertical phase one and we decide, you know, Suzanne's saying, I can sell these units and I'm ready to go. And we say, nope, we don't want to do it anymore and we just pull out. Then there are, there is a penalty, but that penalty is limited to, we pay her the full developer fee for only that phase. But we, we don't pay for the rest of the work. And then the other penalty is if we, for some reason, does, like, default in the agreement and we, you know, issue, there's no reason for us to do any of these things because we have better outs already built into the agreement. But if for some reason things go really crazy and we, you know, don't pay her, we put issue stop work orders for, you know, no reason, or we get you know, something, we get a court order that's filed by her for us to stop, no, did we get a court order to stop? That's the only instance where we have to pay her the full developer fee is if we default under the agreement. And there's literally no reason why that should happen because we have cheaper, better alternatives to exit the agreement than that. Does that help? Okay.
And just as far as what we would be moving forward with tonight, I mean, I'm relying very heavily on the fact that staff has, has reviewed this agreement and other relevant agreements that are similar. And from those, we've taken out the, you know, the most appropriate ways to move forward with this agreement. And then also, Keely, that you've reviewed this agreement and that you're comfortable with it. And that Scott and Shannon have reviewed this agreement and that they're comfortable with it. And I mean, because that's going very heavily into like, you know, my thought process along with Dix is I don't know all the answers to all of these questions, but I'm relying on all these people who have reviewed this agreement, who are experts in this area. And so that's what I'm, I mean, in addition to all the checks and balances, that's how I've gotten comfortable with continuing to move this process forward. It's not because I'm feeling like timing is an issue. It's not because I feel like I know what, you know, financially is happening in the nation right now. I don't, there are tons of unknowns, but the things that we can control as far as reviewing and incorporating the best language we can, I feel very comfortable with that we have the right people at the table to have done that.
All right, if we get additional grants for this project, would that, where would that live? Would that go into reducing the town subsidy? And then, um, did we end up writing in that the, that seventy-thirty incentive is per phase? Is that, does that live in there now?
It does.
And then lastly, that exhibit A, the preliminary phase one budget, is that part of the developer agreement or like that, we're not tied to that in any sort of way, right? Like that's just
That's just a preliminary.
Like a napkin kind of.
Yeah.
And one of the things that Dick mentioned a couple of weeks ago, that separate from the developer agreement, but I think would be really helpful is understanding the town's total subsidy goal of fifty million dollars and where we are phased on that. So understanding that if we, you know, this one, it shows the gap for phase one is thirty-two, thirty-three million. So, um, you know, that kind of gives us seventeen earmark for phase two vertical if we decide to do that. If we can just kind of keep an eye on that and have like a, like one of those big temperature posters or something, you know, when you're funding just so that we, we understand that when we authorize infrastructure that where we should be to where we are and then, and that just a visual for the, for council to, and I know it's kind of put in the cart before the horse, but
Can I make one really quick clarification? I don't know what exhibit you guys are looking at, but the exhibits to the developer agreement, there is no budget. That's, that's
Exhibit A to the memo.
A to the memo. Okay, yep. So that is not, yeah, 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 that's a not, just a really good point of clarification. That is, you guys are not approving that budget as part of the developer. Nope.
And we're not agreeing to like soft costs or anything.
No, none of that, none of that. That's all, that is all coming.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things I'm having a challenge with is, you know, and, and to your point, Kelly, like it's super important that staff is able to run with doing all the details. And there's a lot of detail. So thank you for the hard work on that. I think when I look at like, you know, essentially a million dollars a unit, I understand the buildup there, right? We're building a neighborhood. There's a ton of infrastructure in there. From doing some development, maybe like the tenth of the scale of this, I've got some understanding of cost. I don't have firsthand experience with this structure. So for me, getting a little more detail and, and understanding specifically related to the specifically related to the vertical soft costs and related to the vertical hard costs, and just seeing, yeah, what is, what does the developer have going on that's creating kind of the 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 cost we saw two meetings ago, and and then how does that relate to, you know, square foot? And I get like, hey, with the smaller units, you got, you got more kitchens per thousand square feet, right? That's more expensive. So I just, for me to understand the overall scale, again, coming in with a fifty dot fifty million dollar commitment from the town, I'd love to make sure I understand those layers before I give a thumbs up, because I just don't want to say yes when I don't quite understand.
But that'll be a thumbs up on the GMP, right? Not on the developer agreement tonight. Is that what you're saying?
I think, and I just wanted to make sure it was like, clear what I'm. Go ahead.
The the, um, infrastructure is part of the developer agreement, right? Am I understanding that correctly, that that we're approving, moving forward on the horizontal at this point?
Not yet, nope.
The budget.
Yeah, that was unclear to me.
The GMP agreement and the budget for horizontal infrastructure will be presented to you at second reading.
June tenth.
Yeah, so currently scheduled for June tenth.
Separate, though, even then, they'll be separate. So we can still continue or not continue, moving forward or not with the developer agreement. The GMP is completely.
This agreement is contingent upon you guys approving the GMP and the budget for the horizontal infrastructure. If you, if we don't, if if the developer and the town can't come to agreement on those actual numbers, then there's no agreement.
To move forward on.
To move forward.
Okay, but they're separate, but they're gonna happen at the same time.
Right, you'll get it. Well, yeah, because you, yeah, I mean, we could have done this agreement, you know, weeks ago, but I know there there was consternation about not being able to see the numbers. And maybe there was confusion about what you were actually, you know, what we were actually presenting to you for approval. This just sort of like sets the stage, and then there's all of these decision points, including the GMP and the budget for the horizontal.
Yeah. But if we approve this and then decline to approve the GMP on the horizontal, we're on the hook for all those expenses till now.
Well, we're already on the hook for the expenses that are.
Part of the pre-development.
Yeah.
Which I guess should be.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah. We're not gonna.
How much time are we gonna have to get comfortable with these numbers?
With the numbers? Moment, question.
With the GMP or with the?
Yeah.
I I'll be honest, we're we're pretty, pretty close. The goal right now is value engineering that infrastructure number. So right now, if if we can chip away at that infrastructure number, that's that's great, but right now, that's not necessarily a guest. That's the whole full budget rolled up, just as one number to simplify it. So right now, it's value engineering stage.
And just infrastructure, right?
And you, Dick, I know you like to have, you know, that we talked about that Thursday, when the packet comes out to Tuesday, when you actually have to sit and talk about it, you like a little bit more time. And so if we have those numbers in advance that are finalized, and it's what's going in the packet, we will try to get those to you.
Yeah, and and just to clarify where I'm coming from, you know, it's the, it's the it's the long term and the amount of the spend. I I understand we've got stop points. But it's it's the long term nature of this agreement. I feel like we really need to get this right. And and, you know, I ask questions and I keep hearing, well, that's part of the GMP, you know, like extras and you know, change orders and things like that, and and the unit sizes and the unit numbers and the number of bedrooms and the unit mix. All there's a lot of details that sound like they're coming with this GMP that we're gonna have four days to look at. I I just, I feel like I totally agree with Todd. Once we get the structure right and we approve the budget, that 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 we that we can completely turn staff loose to run with this. I I feel like it's almost unfair to the staff if we don't take the time to get all the details in the long term structure to help help the staff do their job. So that's my biggest struggle, and I'm still struggling with it.
So, um, I guess I would, and we could go back and and sort of share the process we went through with stables. We're, you know, essentially following that that process. It's just these, some of these things got condensed. When you see the GMP, it will be just for the horizontal, so we have time between now in the fall, when you see vertical numbers, to talk more about the specifics of the development and the units themselves. I think you all gave a lot of feedback on unit mix so that, you know, townhomes duplexes, single families and all that. And so, you know, the staff and Suzanne have taken that, what she got back from you, to design the neighborhood and to come up with kind of essentially a rough idea of what that vertical pricing will look like. But I think we want, we do and should talk a little bit more about the sides of the units and the bathrooms and the bedrooms and things to make sure that, you know, you all want to spend as much money as you're planning to spend on these units in the current size and configuration that they're in. But that is for vertical and that we don't have that, we're not ready to have that conversation yet, because that's the next step. So it is, um, I think Keely has said this, the developer agreement really just sets the stage for our agreement with Suzanne, and the GMP agreement is a very, specific's not the right word, but it's a very structured, best practice document. It's not something that, you know, staff puts together. There's a for lack of a better word, that will come to you with the GMP, and that is, it will say in it what it needs to say in it.
Yeah, it's essentially the same document that we use for our own horizontal construction projects. We haven't talked that through yet. But I'm sure Suzanne, whoever Suzanne brings on as a contractor will be familiar with it. Yeah.
I just don't have a good sense of what are the dollars that this agreement's agreeing to?
None.
And how much are the, what are the dollars that GMP are gonna clarify for us? I know it all ends up equaling somewhere around, you know, one fifty or. And, um, hey, I'm just uneasy with it. I
And I think.
Like more time with all the details to to look at this.
And I I guess the only thing I could say is that to, you know, Keely just said it, that this developer agreement doesn't commit you to any dollars. So it is just setting the stage for what the dollars could be if you approve the budgets. But if you don't approve the budget, you don't approve moving forward, or things come in too high, you know, whatever the the situation is, then there's no money attached to the agreement.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I would say, and I don't, it it's not intended to change anybody's mind or anything. I just want to, want to give you my, what I think. You couldn't have an agreement that gave you more flexibility, yet also allowed you to move forward with a housing project, right? Like there, we've done our absolute, I I don't see another way to do this without just stopping the whole project and and basically sort of starting over. It it gives you all of the outs that you could ever need, base that have been raised. We just don't want to do this project right now. And if that's where you guys are at, that's okay. But there's no, there's not a better way to structure this agreement to to handle, I think, what I'm hearing as the concerns. I think we've addressed all of those concerns. So I think it really is a decision. Are you, do you guys want to move forward with this right now, or do you not? I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Very well said, and I think I see this agreement as just the necessary next step to move this project forward. Without this agreement, we don't move. And just to make sure that I understand this, the exhibit A that was part of the memorandum, not attached to the agreement, I think of that like a fit test when we're deciding whether this project will fit on this piece of land. And it's not intending to bind us to any of those numbers. It's just saying that our staff with the input of a third party expert, has looked at the project, looked at the numbers, and it fits. And so the next step is to drill that down with the agreement to the budget, where we can say yes or no again. So I, I for one, I'm ready to move forward with this project. We're wasting building time at this point.
Questions?
We had a couple more.
Go for it.
Section twenty-six E, uh, talks about what happens if there's termination, right? Um, and in there, let me just scroll down. It references like the last section there. For purposes of this section, planning docs shall not include architectural, engineering, and construction plans and documents for the vertical construction. Is that a typical in this situation? Like, if we paid for it and it seems like that's a, you know, it's kind of a key piece that we would want if if for some reason it it terminates, and it says it's the developer terminating, like, we would, I think we would want those documents to be able to kind of proceed.
The second sentence says that if there's a termination of the agreement under any provision, the ownership transfers to the town.
And then it says, for purposes of this section, planning documents shall not include architectural.
Sorry.
So just, yeah, no, it's all good. It's, yeah, it's a nuanced question there. The, um, and I guess my concern there, right, is like, hopefully that never happens, but if for some reason the developer stops, and we want to keep proceeding, and we got to change horses, then.
That is, that's an excellent point.
I'd want those.
You mean, they're just not stamped? Because generally speaking, even if like I go buy plans and then switch gears, you can't build unless they're stamped by that architect. We could recreate the same plan, id- ideally.
Right.
They're stamped, yeah, from the architect.
Right, so I think it's if, I actually think it would be if we so the developer can only terminate for cause. So I really think the question is if we terminate for cause, we should get ownership of those documents. I'm saying.
I just don't want to get stuck without plans.
We terminate for cause.
That as well.
For that one scenario, not for the convenience, but for cause.
I don't know. I I don't know the ins and outs of the architectural designs and what can be done or not on that, and so I really want to defer and talk to Suzanne about that.
Thank you for investigating. I appreciate it. Um, another question, section four, when it talks about phase development, in the middle there, it says, it is an essential element of this agreement that town affirmatively authorize the commencement of vertical construction phases one and two, as well as horizontal phase two. And that, to me, kind of conflicts with what I thought I was just hearing here about.
Why?
Flexibility. It it that seems to, in my head, and then that's like, I guess the question to you is like, does that bind us? Does that clause bind us for proceeding with future developments there?
No, that's the clause that tells you you have the discretion to affirmatively approve or not approve.
Phase two.
Phase, any of the next phases.
So it's saying then, it's a good thing I didn't go to law school.
Oh, just that it's an essential element of the agreement that the town affirmatively authorizes.
We're not doing that.
I know what you're saying, too.
You're saying that protects us. I was reading that as like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I specifically put that in just to protect that it needs to be affirmative action in the future.
Right.
But I kind of get what you're saying on the on the wording, so we can look at that.
Yeah, is there an easy way to just clean that up to, yeah?
I feel like the rest of the language in the paragraph, because it does go on and explain that each phase has to be affirmatively authorized at a town, at a public meeting. So I, that's the explanatory language for it. So I, yeah, you have to read it all in context.
Okay, if you're comfortable with it and Felice is comfortable, then I'm good there. Thank you for walking me through that.
Yeah. There's a lot of language in this.
Yeah. Would it be possible in section twenty, you know, just jumping around here, to extend that sales time to maybe four months? I just worry about like you get, kind of Lori, what you alluded to, right? Like, you have, you have a contract terminated at the end, you got to go back, and I think the way that at the stables is like, somebody's got to get, hey, you're up, then you got to go get qualified. So the timeline to get somebody qualified and approved.
Yeah.
And then if you end up with a, you know, you can see how those kind of domino, and you end up a week or two, and then they're out, and then a week or two, and they're out, and then you go under contract, and then they get to loan forty-five days later, they're out. So I think another month in there would be in benefit to the town.
So the important thing to understand about that provision, about section twenty, is that is actually, it was, it's designed to address an issue where she doesn't have units that are like that that there's a a remedy if she's not, if she can't sell the unit. It's actually not to address that specific situation about purchasers falling out. And one of the things that we didn't, you guys, you know, we didn't give you the full context for that issue that is addressed in C. Part of the problem is that the purchase agreements that she was using, and I know Felice is already working on fixing this for her, had a thirty day dropout clause and only a five hundred dollar deposit. That's part of her problem. The other part of her problem is the SCHA and the lottery. So we, our staff is committed to working on that with the SCHA. So we don't really want to change this, because this, we, what we want is those units occupied, not sitting empty. That's what this is really for, is to provide those opportunities if she can't get someone in. If she can't sell them, right?
Yeah.
So if she can't, if that's what that is actually for. C, twenty C is actually to address what happens if somebody drops out and then the lottery isn't working. So the the delays that she's been experiencing in stables are actually not really something that, like, the better way to address that is do the two things I just mentioned, which is her, you know, fixing her purchase agreements, and then the SCHA fixing their lottery process.
So you don't need three months, then?
We don't, yeah, we don't need, right. We actually want like, like, three months is less, like, we want lesser than.
Question.
Yeah.
Because I
Yeah.
I had questions about the same one, so I might interject a related question, then you continue, Todd. How many units were on the, how how far down the lottery list did we get on stables? Or have we gotten so far? You know, understood with the problems that Keely just defined, you know, we had a lot of people drop out, a lot of people didn't qualify, you know, it wasn't a a big commitment to, uh, to go in. How, what what's left of the lottery now on stables?
Well, I think one, to just kind of kick that off, one thing we definitely learned from stables is the it was good in theory of sectioning off units, but it needs to be by unit type, because so the furthest down they've been on the lottery, I want to say it's like a hundred ish people, but then that's a dropout situation. So that's and the problem is, is when you have a lot of those duplexes with the townhomes, because you're calling people that are not, that are saying, hey, I can't qualify for that, essentially, for the duplex. So you really got to section those off. So that's a big lesson learned that I think, you know, in conjunction with twenty C, will be super helpful on a project like this. But the uptake, our understanding is that with the four lotteries, there wasn't that far on the list. It's more the dropout situation at the end that really deepens how far that list goes.
What were the highest demand and what were the lowest demand units on stables?
Highest demand were single families. I'd have to give back to you on lowest demands. But definitely, there were a lot of people that were only in it for for the single families, and then when, when they, those were gone pretty fast, there was, I'm not interested anymore.
Continue, Todd, sorry.
Oh, thank you for the break. What was, and this goes to the staff memo on exhibit A, um, you mentioned the three percent escalation. If I missed any notes on that, I apologize, but what was, what's, what do we got cooking there that's driving that?
Well, um, for the initial sales, um, the agreement restricts the initial sale price to um, some very specific prices that were based on, initially we set them a year ago. Um, and they actually, um, if you utilize today's AMIs, those work out to be about eighty-five percent AMI in the low end and then a hundred and fifty for the, for the, one forty-five for the single families. Um, and so that's where she's holding her price for the initial sale phase. Um, each subsequent sale phase, um, she can increase the prices by three percent. That to us is a better deal than obviously relying on AMI, which is going up like ten percent a year. So these units should theoretically become more affordable over time as AMI goes up ten percent every year. And our pricing is only going to go up a total of nine percent over the first four sale phases, if that goes all the way to twenty-nine, so.
Well, that's three percent annually.
It's three percent per phase. So she might do her initial phase in April, then she might have a second phase in the fall. So um, you know, if she did have two sale phases, say in twenty-six, they could actually go up three percent for that initial sale phase and three percent for the second sale phase. It's still less than we are projecting AMI is going to go up over the year. And since our starting point is so low, um, we think they're going to stay affordable and even more affordable over time relative to AMI.
And I will note that that's what she's tied to as a council. If you guys say, you know, what's eighty-five right now, could very well be sixty-five. Um, and we do discuss that that's not necessarily an AMI income that is viable for homeownership. So we have the ability to massage those numbers, but her, for budgetary reasons, we've, we said three percent, that's what you have to stick to.
Yeah, and those numbers will be in the budget that gets presented, just to clarify.
On the, thank you very much for all the details. Um, on the developer fee in section sixteen, I apologize if you guys went through this last meeting. The four percent is there, so that's on all costs and expenses and.
It excludes um, certain items that are listed as exclusions in the budget. Melanie can probably talk more specifically about those exclusions.
Exclusions include upper blue and then we've removed, uh, there might be another one, it'll be on the G M P, but it'll very clearly say it. And then um, removed any salary to the developer, so that's rolled into her four percent.
And that pivot from seven to the four percent, how did that, how was that good for us?
I think it, we didn't look at it so much as about whether or not it was good to, good for us. The, we talked to Todd Goulding, who said, here is the standard way you do this. It's four percent on everything. And the seven percent we were using included some expenses. So it was, I think it was hard to understand exactly, you know, what the benefit to the developer was if there was a benefit to the town. And so we made this change to the four percent sort of hybrid, because we're not applying it to everything, to be more transparent and uh, to make it just easier to understand and more clear about what the developer fee percentage was going to apply to. So, you know, I think you could look at it a couple of different ways. It could be a little bit more money for us, but there's opportunities for savings in other areas where we might not have had that. So it's, I, I can't say it's clearly a benefit or clearly not a benefit. I think it just depends on how the project plays out.
Well, you couldn't say whether it was a clear benefit financially, but it's absolutely a benefit. Because if the community asks what the fee structure is, saying four percent on everything except for three things is much easier than how the seven percent was applied. It was like, not on this line, yes, on that line, and that was just very complicated. So we really did it for clarity.
I like that, thanks.
And I think overall, I mean, four percent, when Todd Goulding went through this, um, it's anywhere from four to seven. So I, I think we feel good on an overall perspective of a developer fee of a project this size being four, as opposed to the latter of seven.
Four with exceptions.
And did he apply that? Like, was he looking at like a similar structure where we've got a developer that's then going up to G C's?
Correct, yep.
He had cases of that?
Very many, yeah.
I also have a question on sixteen. Um, and this may be me not being a lawyer and not reading it correctly, like so often happens. Um, it, it says under the exclusions that any percentage for costs paid for or directly reimbursed by the town. Isn't that how we're handling the horizontal construction that we're directly reimbursing or paying directly for, for the uh?
Yeah, so we've actually proposed a change to that language because it's unclear to just say the budget will exclude only those certain items identified as exclusions. Um, so that we're not confusing that issue, because yeah, you're right.
Very own. I think that's what I got for now. Thank you very much.
I had some of the same stuff that you did, Todd.
Oh, you know, the other comment I did want to make is that we did change, um, we added, so this agreement will be with both of Suzanne's LLCs that are responsible for the horizontal infrastructure and then the overall development. And I did that just as another extra way to protect the town and make sure that we've got the right entities on the hook for the right pieces.
I also had a question on the timing of town obligations. Um. Um, we're, I guess I'm curious as to see how we're calculating exactly what the town obligations are in the end, you know? Um, but um, it seems to me that with the infrastructure on phase one, we're pretty much front paying, we're paying upfront for almost all of our um, obligation for phase one. Is that, am I reading that correctly? At thirty-two-ish million? That's what we were told that, that we think phase one subsidy would be by the town.
Please one subsidy overall. So phase one includes a vertical subsidy as well.
Correct, so the.
It's twenty-two and a half for infrastructure and then that'd be finish. Well, no, it'd be, it essentially the, we, we, we've really got to look at it as the total expenses minus the revenue. So yes, the soft cost is ten, which is close to flushing out that number, but you could kind of slice that in a, in a bunch of different ways. That it's not a direct correlation of infrastructure and soft costs. It's a direct correlation between infrastructure and then what is the total cost for the vertical of the project? Minus what any revenues and grants come in.
Of the revenues, yeah, we're paying out cash.
I think the, um, what you are front loading is the infrastructure. So that's, that's the big chunk of that number. And it's because, you know, if you remember on the master planning map, right? It's got that kind of long section in phase one. It includes putting in the main road and then connecting to the major utilities. So it definitely front loads the infrastructure costs in phase one.
But we're not going to pay more and then get reimbursed at sales price, right? I mean, we're not.
Not for infrastructure, no, no.
Are we going to see a scope of work with this? This is getting to be a pretty big document we're going to be looking at for three days next week or four. Um, scope of work, I mean, I'm hearing road and sewer line and everything. I don't really know how long, far that goes. I don't know where the, how much of the sewer we're putting, are we doing anything on phase two or?
It's just phase one infrastructure. And I don't, I don't know that we would go, we would normally provide, you know, the length of the road and the miles of asphalt and that kind of information.
Well, just a map that shows us, so we have a visual of it, you know? If we're, and again, maybe not for this agreement as much as for the, the um, maximum price that we're being asked to approve.
I think we can show them now.
Yeah.
I, I'd be far more comfortable if we had a cash flow schedule, you know, flow chart as to how and when we expect cash to go, go out and where is it coming from? Is it drawn from the bank? Is it, is it drawn from us? And I think the infrastructure is pretty clear. Um, but when does that start coming from us? So just the.
Yeah, our, we won't start paying for anything until vertical. Um, outside, so the infrastructure, I think is very, that's going to be done as just a normal construction contract. And we'll pay when there's, you know, works completed and we get the payment request and then we pay the money and it has to stay within, you know, guaranteed maximum price agreement is just that. So that's, you know, really pretty straightforward. Um, there's this, you know, relatively small contingency built into that um, agreement um, for unexpected things, but I do know that we've done a lot of due diligence on this site. So we're very much hoping that there are less expected things, unexpected things um, for, for horizontal infrastructure for this particular phase, um, or just project in general. But then for vertical, those, this, the town, the, you know, the way that it will work is Suzanne, we will convey the property to Suzanne. Um, once we've decided that we're good with the numbers and we give some preliminary authorization, we'll convey the property. There will be another checkpoint, um, like three or four months later, where we lock in the budget for vertical uh, phase one. At that point in time, once she will go and get a loan for the uh, construction of the, the vertical phase one and she will get her contractors, under stop me if I'm saying something wrong. She will get, she will get her contractors under contract. Once they start going vertical, we will pay our subsidy. And this will all be lined out in the budget that gets approved by you for vertical construction phase one. We will, you will see what our subsidy actually is. Um, and it gets paid out when she get, pulls building permits um, for those, for those units. Yeah, and then we have, um, you know, she has to complete those units within eighteen months of framing inspection.
And if we, we want those prices locked in, I mean, we can push that to the fall. We pushed it backwards to January to give more comfort to council. So.
Right.
That it, we could say, you know, uh, transfer property in the fall, we expect the price to be locked in. So it's kind of what, what do you guys want to see?
Right, you don't have to decide right now.
Yes.
Don't decide right.
Just one last one, I think. Um, can you give me some more talking points about the developer unit? And so here's my concern, I think, if he gets a single family unit and that single family unit, it's only one concern, that single family unit's in like the last part of phase one. Then what's the benefit of having him living on the property if, if we're basically done and for some reason we decide not to do phase two?
I'd say we should require it in the initial ones. I mean, we could define that very easily because I, I agree with that.
We can make that. It is, it's just, I think it just says vertical phase one, so we can say sales phase, first sales phase. Change within days.
Carol, did you have anything?
No, I'm ready for comments.
Are you happy with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions, Steve?
Yeah, sure. Um, so this has been, I don't know how many meetings, just about the developer agreement. So I know we'll all probably say this, but appreciate all of staff time on this. We appreciate you, Felice and Suzanne, working with us. And I know we had a lot of questions because there is that pressure of this is the last neighborhood essentially that we can bring online. So we want to do it right. I share um, a lot of the questions, concerns we brought up at this meeting, we brought up at previous meetings. But um, I know we'll have a lot more conversation when we get to the budget, when we get to the unit type, um, the price, who we're serving. Those conversations will be continued, but at this stage with the developer agreement, um, I feel really great about this public-private partnership to bring this neighborhood online. Um, I feel very confident in what staff has done to build this agreement with the developer to really protect the town. It's very clear that we have numerous checkpoints, budget checks, opportunities to step back if we decide that this is not the right project at the right time. So I appreciate you highlighting all those. I appreciate Suzanne being um, agreeable to having all those. I feel like this is transparent and ultimately it is the framework to continue moving forward with this project. Um, again, we have a lot more conversations as we'll get into the weeds and details. But at this point, I feel very confident in this developer agreement and I'm supportive.
Winston, next, I agree with Carol.
Um, I know that this originally just got a spotlight put onto it, given the price tag. Now, we saw a hundred and fifty million dollars and went, wait a minute. Doug heals in and uh, I'm so appreciative of uh, Lori and Melanie and Shannon and the whole team and Felice and Suzanne and Keely for um, taking the time and really listening to council as I think that all the comments that have been made on and offline at work session and in uh, separate meetings have made this a better agreement. And um, as, you know, the, the framework that really provides transparency for uh, for the town and for constituents, as well as um, breaking into more digestible pieces where we're able to move at our pace and that this isn't a commercial project. This is a town project that will be able to uh, move forward diligently and responsibly. And I think that's uh, the most important thing, so I'm supportive.
Um, sure. Um, I agree with everything that's been said so far. Um, I'm very appreciative of staff. Um, what, what we've accomplished here and what we've envisioned and what Suzanne has accomplished in the pre-development phase is just phenomenal. I'm super excited to get this project across the finish line. But I do have a however, um, as I said two weeks ago, um, and I, I just, hey, this just doesn't feel to me the way to do this. Um, before I can agree to, to the, to the terms and in the developer agreement, I, I just, I, I really need to be informed by the dollars with a little bit of time, more than four days to um, to absorb it and, and digest it. So um, my, my um, likely negative vote is, is in no way indicative of, of my desire to do this project. Um, in no way is it, is it um, reflective in any kind of lack of trust or respect or, or um, of the staff, of, of Felice, of, of uh, Suzanne, or certainly Keely, um, or, or Shannon. I, 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 I just, I feel that we kind of get the, the glory of making the hard decisions to help protect and set up a framework to allow the staff to do their job well, so.
Thanks, Dick. Um, yeah, thank you for all the hard work. Um, I agree with a ton of what Carol said there and, and Dick as well. I agree with a ton of what Carol said there and, and Dick as well. Like I've been struggling with the, the cost, the price tag, right? Like I think so much about that. Any savings we can glean on the vertical soft costs and the vertical hard costs and really. Really has an impact, right? Like two million bucks is, is only a minor percent, but it, that has a big impact. So I think one of the things I alluded to earlier, been having a hard time. That I haven't had kind of the, the, the full picture as it relates to, like, hey, here's, here's, here's what we got, that kind of that snapshot. I think the project's super important. I appreciate all of the, kind of the checks. I think that'll be a really valuable piece there to kind of digest that, work through it. If we're not comfortable with those, beat it up and get to a good number there. So yeah, I appreciate all the hard work. Not quite sure where we're at on the developer unit. It sounds like the rest of the group is, is comfortable with the one. That seemed to be a pivot from where we were a few meetings ago. So yeah, I'm still processing, but thank you for adding, I think, what I think we've got is the ability to proceed with. The developer agreement and then a lot of space and pace to make decisions on the costs. I think I just worry that the cost per square foot is really high. And that just makes me nervous, so that's probably that. Thank you.
My take is that adage the, that I heard once in a. Continuing education program about contracts is you can easily get caught in a paralysis of analysis. Where you just keep working the same thing over and over again, but you're not really gaining on the substance of the agreement. And I think everybody, as we've gone through this, has put a lot of pieces into this from the beginning. And I don't want to get stuck paralyzed and not moving forward. So I, I think we're there with the agreement. I think we've got enough escape clauses and ways to get out if we want. And I want to say about working with Suzanne as the developer in this that. This isn't some front range developer coming up here focusing only on the bottom line to them. Suzanne is a member of this community, has been for years and years and years. She wants to do this for the community and she is giving up more than she probably has to. If she was working with somebody just on the dollars and cents of it. And I hope Suzanne doesn't think we're beating her up over this. I clearly favor the single unit to the developer. I think there is a lot to gain for that. In a prior meeting, we heard that there's a historical precedent for having somebody in that capacity. So the single unit, it should be one of the first ones built, kind of as a test run for how it's all going to work. And I think we all win on that. So I'm prepared to vote that we approve the developers agreement as it is with a couple of very minor. Word changes that I think everybody's agreed to today. In that we move to the next phase and sure, we all want to save money. And I think we'll all look at the budgets very closely and we will value engineer wherever we can. But I think we've got to move or we just are going to be stuck. So that's my position. I support moving forward.
Okay, great. I, I think in addition to thanking the team, just the council members, a lot of good edits have come out of all the thinking. So I think everybody really did their absolute best on this and we can move forward tonight. Sounds like you, you feel comfortable making those small edits before or?
I will just confirm the one edit with Felice about the first sales phase, but that's easy language. And then I will print out a revised version for you guys for tonight.
Great. Sounds like we will do first reading tonight. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Felice for being here. All right, we're going to take a quick break.
No, that was your line.
Okay. Okay, we are going to move on to other matters. We're going to do Breck Creative Arts amended and restated funding and operating agreement.
There. So you had a memo in the packet describing the changes that we've made to the agreement with the BCA. I think it's important to point out that we haven't had an agreement or new agreement since 2014. And as we talked about earlier, a lot of things have changed since 2014. And so this agreement would go from the date of signing through December thirty first of 2026. It can be auto renewed for one year terms after that. Or, you know, it can be terminated by either party with notice. And I think the, I didn't give you a redlined version of it because it is, I think, a fairly different document than what originally existed. What we tried to do and Tamara and I worked on it, Martin, the president of the board, worked on it. And Steve was involved with it as well. And we think what we came to is an agreement that we hope fairly accurately represents what council would like to see out of the BCA. So I won't, there were a few things I was going to go through, but in the, you know, the, just keeping an eye on the time. I'm happy to answer any questions. There's just one thing I want to point out, and I think some of you probably noticed it, that the KPI exhibit is not fully developed. And so Tamara is going to gather some information from council. And BCA will work on some additional items for that exhibit. And really, I think both for the town and for BCA, it will be helpful to have some structure in place. For them to understand, for them to know what success looks like. I think over the years, you know, it's been eleven years, so over the last eleven years. Those things have moved on them. And so this is really, I think, will be helpful for them and helpful for council to know kind of what it is. Are we trying to achieve as we work together to move arts forward? And then the other piece, and Steve, I don't know if you wanted to speak to it. I don't know if anyone had questions. On section five, we talked a little bit about having some separation between BCA and the town. As far as the content of the art that is presented. So Steve, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that at all.
Well, I think we recognized that. We're in an environment where not everybody agrees with the benefits of artistic activities. And when government mixes with the selection of what might be our artistic presentations. It can. Run afoul of many different, I think. Constitutional priorities. I don't know if anybody remembers the issue that arose in Dillon when the town council was deciding. What church could use the amphitheater at what time? And whether you, whether we would. Be the ones to designate a LGBTQ event. It provides some insulation for the. It provides some insulation for the town from what are probably fringe, but very real potential legal consequences if the town is deemed to be the one who decides on the use of all of our facilities. So we tried to create a separation there. If the town sponsors something, the town sponsors it, that's fine. If it's an independent act and it offends somebody and we didn't hire that act or put it on, we've created some separation from that.
Steve, so does council have any questions about the agreement? Or anything you'd like to see in there that isn't in there?
Questions for Shannon or?
Can you tell you what's in there that I was happy to see? Is the, kind of the separation of the budget between facilities and programming. I think that is something that provides a little transparency to the organization in what their, the two core functions, one of which is the facility piece, one is the programming. And so I think that was very enlightening. I think they'll do a lot to move forward with, with budgeting and funding. So, thank you.
Shannon, can you talk about section six, right after the part that Steve talked about? Can you clarify the fundraising and fundraising plans adopted after the date of this? Agreement will include efforts to avoid confusion between BCA fundraising and that of resident companies.
So you know, that might be a question that's better for Tamara as far as what that action will be to separate those. I think for our purposes, we wanted to know what their fundraising plan looked like so that we could see what it is they're fundraising for and then, you know, understand if there are overlaps in that. But I can't speak to the tactic of separating that fundraising.
I, I read that to be that because we get a lot of feedback that people say, oh, I've given to your organization, like talking to Breck history or talking to the theater or something, or Breck film. And because I donated to BCA, but then it's not coming back to them. And so I thought that was more of a clarification of what the fundraising that goes to BCA is actually funding and it's not going to the other orgs. Is that not right?
I don't think so. I don't, I think this is for us to understand what their, kind of what is their plan? What are they, you know, their big, kind of big event, their big, you know, that big fundraising event that they do in the core of town? That's fundraising for them. I think we could ask them to provide some detail on how they will do their fundraising. Some clarification for donors that it is for the BCA and not for the partner orders. And I don't know exactly, again, I don't know exactly what that would look like, but if, I know that's an important detail. And so we could ask for some clarification on that.
And that's exactly what the thought was. There is confusion. As Kelly has said, people make a donation to BCA and they think they're supporting the movie theater. But the movie theater is fundraising on its own. And I think this recognizes that BCA recognizes that there's confusion. And they're going to do their best to not have that confusion whenever possible.
Great. Other questions?
Stuck my allotment last round.
We, we'll, we'll talk about the KPIs after, with Tamara or after?
Yeah, I think so. But I do think just to set her up for success for the future. If there's a couple of comments that you wanted to just say right off, that would help her develop the KPIs, I think that's great. Do you want us to do that? Is that part of their presentation or should we do that right now?
You could do that now.
Okay.
You know, I, I mean, collaboration's always huge for me, anytime to effectively and easily without creating too much extra work for anybody to collaborate with the other organizations is huge. So maybe have a, you know, something around that and as well as marketing efforts. You know, I'd, I'd love to see some of the other organizations on the kiosks and stuff like that. It's, you know, just collaborating with that. So really one around collaboration would be great.
Yeah, my comment was exactly the same, which is like, you know, one of the duties of BCA is supporting and collaborating with local artists, organization, businesses. And I really would like to see a KPI that just like, I'm imagining that BCA really uplifts all of the arts organizations. And I think that would be a really great thing to have a KPI created to just ensure that it's clear how BCA is uplifting all of the arts organizations. And your example was perfect of the bill, the board, whatever it's called. Other things like that.
Any other thoughts? Okay. Are you understanding that the KPIs will come back to you and then be added to the agreement after we've all had a chance to look at them? Are you good with us moving forward with the agreement as written? And we don't need a formal legislative action. We just need a thumbs up by everyone. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Then we're moving on to the Breck Create report and the BCA presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Tamara with Breck Create and I'm here today with our new chair, Martin Carter, who comes to us at, from Breckenridge in the Highlands and is an incredible addition, has been on our board for over two years. And gracefully said yes to the leadership role and we're so fortunate to have his expertise, particularly as a requisite mine to my creativity on the operational and technological side of things. So he'll kind of dive in in a moment or two. But this is what we're going to talk to you about today is really our first stab at a quarterly report. We are delighted to be back in front of you after a little bit of a hiatus. And really focusing on the arts district overall, to your point earlier around collaboration and focusing a lot of our key initiatives about on the arts district and how we can move the needle overall and what kind of information you're going to need going forward in order to make decisions toward that goal of having a vibrant, inclusive, welcoming and collaborative district for the center of Breckenridge. And so I'd love to start with just a quick story. We were orienting on Friday, a new board member to Sarah Cox, who owns the Crown. Many of you know her. And I was giving her a tour. We were in the ceramic studio. And we popped into one of our professional artists, a ceramicist Daniella, who also sells tickets for us and is our dual language representative. And what you don't see in the numbers yet is all of the impact that happens between the lines. And really what Danielle told us was, I don't like this space. I love this space. She operates her business out of it. She's a professional artist. She sells her pieces. And there are 10 other artists who use that space as well to run their own business. And not only does Breck Create have those stories, but the Anaro has stories. The backstage theater has stories of the neurodivergent kid who shines on their stage. And so I think, you know, really what we want to share with you today is a first look at what we can provide. We have tons of data and we will have more. And it's really getting to, you know, how our arts partners want to show that, how you want to see it. So that you can tell us and help us co-create the experience of the arts district and help us decide which levers we pull at what time to respond to the community and to the economic landscape that we have here. So I'd like to thank all of our staff and the arts partners who are here behind us, as well as the board members who represent the community on our board and who are online as well. And so with that, I'll turn it over to you, Martin.
Thank you. Thank you, Tamara. And thank you for this opportunity to present to you. I think we're going to be presenting to you on a quarterly basis. A little bit on a quarterly basis and we'll, given that it's the end of the day and we stand between you and I think the last agenda item. We'll, we'll move quickly through this and concisely through it. So I've been living in Breckenridge for the past eight years, on the board for a couple of years, took the chair role in January. And I've really dived in feet first into, you know, all of the workings of the arts community and thoroughly enjoyed it. It's a lot of fun. I see a lot of similarities with things I work in, even though I'm an engineer and technologist. I see a lot of similarity organizationally in what we need to do to be impactful. So there are three takeaways from today. I think the first one, which goes to some of the discussion council had around the agreement, goes to governance. And so I'll talk about that. We're not going to talk about governance going forward. We're going to talk about it today and we'll touch on other items as we, as we continue. The second one is, is the first quarter. You've probably seen, if you, if you read the pack, it's down, consistent with economic trends. However, there is some important color in there which Tamara will go through. And there's also a slate of, I think, very exciting opportunities in the summer, which the, which the council has sponsored and which our, our partners are going to be delivering in programming. And then the third element of the, this presentation here will be that financially, we're on track for the year so far. So hopefully that continues and we will keep you updated of that as we go through the year. So let me move to governance as the first item here. And one of the first things I did was with Tamara, with board members, with our arts partners, who are, many of whom are here in the audience today, is spend time listening. Listening a lot about how we can be more effective, where the gaps are and what we need to change. And that's led to sort of three things. The first of one, the first one is, is the agreement. The agreement really embodies the spirit of what Breck Create is about and what we want to achieve. And I think that was reflected in the discussion in council here. So that's an important piece because it really is, it really is the linchpin for everything else we're going to talk about. If we don't have that right, it's going to be difficult to manage the rest of what we do. So we're all delighted, having worked with Shannon over the last several months, that we've got to something which we're all actually very firmly committed to and agree upon. The second piece is, is having a board which represents the community fully. So the first thing is making sure that the board members cover what our community is, which is business owners and residents and educators, you know, and so on. But also importantly, resident companies. So one of the gaps that we identified very early on is that Breck Create does not have, there's a, there's no mission in, in the Breck Create board, and that is that we do not have a committee and representation, the voice of the resident companies. So we've addressed that. We'll have our first committee meeting tomorrow. We'll see how it goes. I think it's going to be, you know, more storming than norming, but I think we, we spent a lot of time listening to folks. And I think most, most folks, in fact, I think all folks will attend that tomorrow. And the purpose of that committee is really to, to help formulate strategy for the arts district, for the entire arts ecosystem, to align around resources. And also to deal with understanding how the facilities are performing. So it's going to be both around engagement and impact and also around how the facilities are performing. So it'll cover the full spectrum of that. The board will have resident companies, so the committee will have resident companies having a seat on, on, all having a seat on that committee. And one of the members of that committee will be on the board as a voting member of the Breck Create board. So we think that should solve one of the challenges that you talked about, which was representation being, you know, full and inclusive. And that's been critical to us. So that's the sort of the structure of the board that governance piece we're driving forward. The other piece, and being an engineer, I like data and I like facts and I like that sort of to drive decisions. I know in the arts community, there's a lot of stuff which is, you know, you can't quantify and you've kind of got to feel it. But I also start, I still like to start with facts. And so we're driving to a much more fact-driven approach to, to how we manage BCA. And that's everything from facility management. I've been working with Neil and the team on putting in a process which should be launched in June, which will, you know, readily and rapidly respond to any request for a facility fix or a facility issue. That's a collaborative, a collaboration item with, with the town in large part. But we need to manage the facilities so they're available, you know, to us and to our partner organizations when they need them. So that's something we're working on and, and should be in place in June. The other thing is we have a lot of data and I'll come onto that a little later. We have a lot of data on engagement, on impact, on utilization. We need, we want to bring that to the committee. And we will bring that forward in concept, at least around the KPIs. Get your blessing on that. And that's what we report out on a, on a quarterly basis. I, I took note of the collaborative piece. I'm not quite sure how we measure it, but we will find a way to do that in some form. So that we're demonstrating that we are promoting not BCA's efforts, but the entire arts community's efforts for the benefit of the community. So, so that's where we'll go. So, you know, as I've looked at it and I work with a number of companies where I sit, I sit as a chair and work on governance issues and so on. BCA is, it's, it's well governed. That was my first impression when I came in, but there were some significant emissions which we're now dealing with. And I think by filling in these three items here and working on those to, to, to bring them forward, I think we're going to have a terrific board that's fully representing the community and should be able to drive the arts committee on, you know, pretty well. So that's what I had to say on that piece.
We have the next slide, please. So just as a quick reminder, and this was in your packet, this is a map of the arts district. It's 14 facilities, as we call them, five venues. And those five venues are the Riverwalk, being the largest, Old Masonic Hall, the Ridge Street Art Square, which is the collection of historic studio spaces and for classes and workshops and other, the Breckenridge Theater and the Eclipse Theater. There are historically seven companies, nonprofit organizations based here in Breckenridge who have special agreements for usage of those various venues and are essentially given priority as a date in terms of dates and, and how that falls within their own activities. The part that isn't on here, People's Partners, Properties and Programs is definitely the passion piece, which obviously you can see with all the people who joined us in the room today. Next slide, please. And so this is a bit about the people part. I think the lowest common denominator in understanding the performance of the spaces as they were constructed and with the purposes that each of them have is admissions, very basically. And what we have is a bit of a downtick year over year from Q1 of 2024 over 2025. But the interesting part is that we had fewer, more impactful events. And we really believe that kind of going into a recession and the conservative nature of decision-making that we are faced with, that this is a strategy that we really want to pay attention to. So that's particularly true of the Riverwalk Center. We had fewer, more impactful, the last three of four presents program before we paused that happened this winter. And we're really seeing a bit of a lower participation from zip codes in our audience view database from visitors. And so that kind of aligns what, with what we're seeing just overall in the landscape. So this is a picture of the kind of data that we can provide. Of course, each venue is very unique, has different demands, different purposes. Each business that inhabits those venues also have different goals that we measure. But admissions is one piece of how we keep the lights on and what's going on behind them. Next slide, please. how we keep the lights on and what's going on behind them. Next slide, please. And so, you know, this is as a first stab, we probably will have slightly lower admissions overall in 2025 than we did in 2024, mainly because a lot of the time and effort that we had invested previously in the Presents program, we reallocated towards other initiatives. So you can see some of those listed there under the social impact that we have. There are really two main ways that we see the arts being used. One is, you know, and we're so grateful for the, the opportunity and that the town has historically, over the last 30 years, really seen the arts as a strategy for driving non-art's outcome. Be that economy, social impact, diversity, equity, inclusion, you name it. You know, there is a way that we support one of those town and community goals. So specifically Juneteenth Pride, Fourth Summer Camp, our BIFA collaborations and building out Dia de Muertos Festival to be more inclusive into a Latin festival while maintaining that core tradition that we've established over the last 10 years are, are some of the ways that we are collaborating with each of the town's different agencies, commissions, et cetera. The, a large part of that reinvested time and effort is around Spark and July 4th Cirque. And we were only really able to do that because of the scaling back of the Presents and really glad for the opportunity and just want to celebrate our staff for making that happen in a short turnaround time. And we're also looking forward to an incredible collaboration in BIFA, where we'll be helping to support financially a collaboration with the Backstage Theater Workshop production of a new musical called The Great Divide that will extend their season by at least a week and, and four performances with hopefully more to come in the 150, 250 year. Next slide, please.
All right, I'll take this. So feature reporting, we're, we're awash with data. The world's washed with data. The tremendous amount of noise out there. I went through and researched in, in, in arts organizations like this, how many metrics there are. There are somewhere between 50 and 70 metrics. We don't want to see all of those. We want to see the things that are most germane to us as Breck and, and collaborate with you and others to sort of define what those things are, both at a council level, a board level and an operating level. But we've come up with, with three buckets and it's really engagement, impact and operating performance. Those are sort of three buckets we're going to work out of. On the engagement side, you can see we're thinking about admissions and utilization as kind of critical metrics for us to take a look at. We have that data. Not, it's not that easy to pull together, but it's there. Economic benefit is something that can be derived. It's, it's, it's part science, part art, but BTO does it. And so I think we can learn off them, from them is how to do that and actually really understand what the economic impact of the arts are. And there are some very good metrics in which, by which to do that. And then, you know, the final one is operating performance, which is how the facility is performing, how we're serving the needs of the partners of, that come into these, into these facilities, how we're benchmarking against third parties who are also doing this kind of stuff. And that, th- those metrics we will bring up as well and be able, able to report out in those on a, on a regular basis. So I think we have a rich set of data. We need to convert it into information that can be useful for us to translate into action. I think we're, this is the first stab at it. When we, when we're with you again, I think in the July period, I will go through in detail what those are and get your input. We had some input today and hopefully start to report out over the coming quarters on, on how we're performing on each of those three pillars. So that's our intention on, on reporting. If there are any comments or inputs from council today, that we'd love to hear them.
Yep. Next slide, please. So like Martin said at the beginning, we won't spend much time here. We're on track to meet our target. You know, I think there are a couple of things that we're looking out for. One is we had anticipated a $50,000 Madrid corporate sponsor on Spark. And we're finding actually that corporate sponsorship obviously is a competitive market and fundraising overall is people are, funders are more conservative in this landscape since 20, since January. But they also like to have seen what they're investing in before. And so the unknown of what Spark offers is playing into that. We are prepared, you know, to absorb that estimate with our, with our reserves. If we aren't able to meet that target or by managing the expenses. So we're, we're doing our best to keep, to keep Spark as, as minimal of a investment as possible with a maximal impact. Really the three things that we were able to continue in our operating budget this year and, and kind of respond from a drop in nature is that Juneteenth Pride and Resident Company Collaboration Funds. So we're excited about that and continuing the, the Cirque mechanics experiment on July 4th. I think the bigger picture is we have invested in a financial capability uplift project, so we can share our numbers in any way and will be taking the next quarter as we are in the budget to really do some education, make sure all of our partners, you, the town, anybody who's really interested in going through the numbers has an understanding of how that all works and how much the facilities versus programs cost, how much cost per partner there is, per facility, location, per project, program, revenue, expenses, you name it, we can deliver it. And that is another piece of data we'd be interested in knowing what you're wanting to see. Next slide.
Hold quick on the previous slide. Is the cultural master plan that's going to the town's expense, correct?
Correct. So we currently have, as you can see, we spent, oh, where is it? We spent about 10,000 in January on that. So we are going to have about 140,000 left, which we were always intending to use our reserves around. So we will repurpose that. For example, if we aren't able to hit that Spark goal, it will come from our reserves. If you look in our P and L on, as an attachment and our plan budget, we're just going to reinvest those reserves into key priorities that we have in 2026 and beyond. So one of the plan assumptions that we have on the next slide is to be able to respond to the outcomes of the Arts District Management Committee priorities. So once that committee gets together and starts to define what tactics and what priorities we have, we, some of them will have cost tags to them and we'll start to utilize those reserve funds to make those happen to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
Here are our plan and budget assumptions. You know, I think in addition to any other data that you're interested in seeing, this is where we're starting from in the next several weeks and putting together our financial models to respond to both potential recession scenario and also to build capacity for us to really drive the Arts District vibrancy and, and be a partner to all those who, who use it. We'd love any feedback you have on this and all the data we presented today.
You guys have one more slide? We have one more, two more slides in our packet, so I just wasn't sure.
Oh, you do?
Well, it's just like budget stuff.
Planning out, that's appendix, so it's there for your, your information and knowledge. This is our last slide.
Questions or comments or input? Anything? Marika, anything? Seems like you wanted to, but maybe you don't.
I have a question. I'll, I'll go first. This is kind of in the minutia, but just only because you guys did present on the precious plastics. I'd be kind of curious, and it does not need to be today, but about an update about that program. I keep hearing it. I've never seen anything. Like what's, what are, do people go to classes? Are there things coming out of there? All that. So maybe just an update on what that program looks like.
Sure. Yeah, we'd love to present. I can give you some highlights if you'd like right now. So that is, we have both classes and workshops that people pay for, as well as open studios where people just come in and experiment with the machine. We have collection days where people are dropping off. I don't have the specific impact statistics around it, but we do track the number of pounds of plastic that we keep out of the landfill. You know, it has become a really beloved program. And we are coming up with a library of projects that are easy to produce, that anybody can come in and it's constantly involving. So we do have a full-time precious plastics studio coordinator because she's in there shredding, processing plastic, figuring out the class model, the projects. It is an entire business in and of itself. But we would love to share a bit more about that and the impact. It has been one of the most, the programs that we've had the most fundraising success around in terms of grants as well. Otherwise, without that level of subsidy and of course, the, the support of the facility itself, we, it wouldn't recover all the costs that it takes for the program. So it definitely, we've been monitoring how that goes and we'll have a decision to make how it fits into our future plans with that full-time role, because the full-time role was a two-year commitment, also based on our reserves.
Great. Maybe if you could have some of those numbers for us, like just as far as how much material you've used and then also how many people have taken the classes. That would be really informative.
Absolutely. I think just for this first quarter, we're up around 700 pounds of plastic processed, but I have to check my numbers. I'm pretty sure that's what it was. Might be in the packet, actually.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I was lost in Appendix A after you just said what you're going to talk about.
It's generating a number that I wanted to see, which seems to be like the number of events times the seats in the venue is what tells us the total capacity of that venue, correct?
Correct.
I have a much more basic question in terms of like ticket revenue collection. So like if, I'm going to butcher all of this, so sorry for the example. If the NRO is selling, if you are selling tickets for the NRO, how does that revenue get split out? Does that revenue all get attributed to the NRO? Does it, how does, I just don't know how that reporting.
Sure, I can give you. So we provide several shared services to support the district operations. One of those are patron services, shared services, which is all of the ticketing software, the personnel to staff box office, support the, you know, the uploading of the website, all the backend, the ticket scanners, et cetera. That has a certain, we call that plus the production support that we might provide to a non-event producer like the BOEC or some other in-kind user, production support and technical support. So there's, there's those two shared services that we provide and you subsidize as the town to enable the community use of those facilities first and foremost. We recover a certain amount of cost on those event services by charging back certain things per the agreement, like time and labor for box office staff who sit for the three hours of any given performance that might happen. And there are a variety of other things on our rate sheet, which we share with the town each year. The, the ticket services essentially, we set it up in the system and there's the ticket price that is collected plus a service charge that's passed along to the user, to the patron. And that comes back as a cost recovery item to Breck Create to help underwrite the cost of the, all of those various things I listed. So all of the gross on the, on the ticket price itself goes to the organization. It, depending on the level of production and box office services that they use, there's a cer- different chargebacks for different, for each agreement that we have with every user.
How many of the resident orgs do you sell tickets for?
For the resident companies, each one of them except Breck Film, they operate their own ticketing system out of choice, but we are in the process of, you know, and we hope some of this can come through the committee, but also just on the staff level, we're try, we, our Audience View agreement comes up in April of 2026. So we're starting a needs assessment to see, okay, what, what's working, what's not working about Audience View.
That's the ticketing company?
That's the ticketing provider that provides the license for the software. So to see if that's a direction we continue to go beyond 2026, or if there's a way that we can bring more partners aboard and solve for essentially what we'd like to see is a one central point of ticketing for the community, because that's what's best for the user is ultimately to find all of their stuff in one spot.
And the committee, the committee's going to make that decision with, or ultimately the BCA board, but the committee will probably have most of the discussion on that.
The need assessment will definitely come from what are the, you know, what, what do our, all of the facility users need? And then it's our job to make sense of that and determine the trade-offs, you know, what the cost is for any of those services, you know, for any of those data pieces, the cost of the software, whatever it is, and find the best solution for everybody.
So many details. Anything else?
Comment. I really applaud the committee with the resident companies and excited to see a full voting, full, full board member come out of that. I think that's super important is to have that voice, that direct conduit of, of input from those, those organizations. So I really applaud that. To Steve's initial comments, I, as I recall, when, when this organization was first formed or many years ago, 10 years ago, I guess, that was a huge part of it, you know? We don't want town telling us what we're going to do. And I think we've, we've maybe gotten away from that a little bit. So I think it's great that we're getting back to that. I do think there should be creative independence with the organization for sure. All the organizations for that matter, all the arts organizations. So yeah, just a couple shout outs for you.
Thank you.
Any final comments, questions? Martin, I want to thank you for your time. I know that you have been incredibly dedicated to this whole process and certainly we appreciate everything that you're working with Tamra on and that Tamra's, you know, a great leader of the BCA and we're happy to have you guys collaborating together and get the best out of the organization. So thank you very much and all the board members and arts orgs. We're very grateful for the arts in this community and very proud of them. So we're looking forward to just seeing continued success and I'm sure, even though there's been a slight downturn, I'm sure we're still going to have a great year. Looking forward to Spark.
Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure. And just, just one pitch for, for BCA, I think on June, is it June 24th? Doing it a day in the life of BCA. So if you have an opportunity to walk with the folks in BCA and understand how they operate and the things that they're doing on a daily basis, that could be a useful thing to.
Bring your town councilman to work.
Exactly, exactly. And your dog, if you wish.
That sounds great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So I think we'll do a little reporting out. Is that okay? Sheena wants to get this. Lot of long breaks today, so I, I feel up for it. Everybody feel up for it? Seeing, hearing no opposition. We're going to start with the reported town manager and staff.
I actually don't really have much for you. I will be away from the 6th through the 14th. But Scott will be acting town manager, but I'll send that. But Scott will be acting town manager, but I'll send that out to you in an email as well. Other than that, I don't think I have anything.
Great, easy. Um, so I don't think I was at the last MMC, so you want to go right into that?
Uh, I did that one.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're at the end of the week. Okay. We haven't had cast. So, Breck Open Space.
We had a open house at the Rec Center and that was, I am missing the date on that, but it was, uh, last week or the week before, one or the other. And, um, I wanted to say thank you to our communications, to the BTO for putting it out and just all the participation. We had, we had a packed house.
Great.
Um, and, you know, we had, uh, different stations set up. One was on, uh, new, um, trail projects, one was on our sign, um, our, uh, sign pilot that'll be happening this year. We had some on forest health and acquisitions. Um, we had another, uh, stand on the McCain property and what we're doing for that. And just our, our community was super engaged and I think there was, um, multiple reasons between, uh, the location, the time, the effort from everyone putting the word out and, um.
The subject mattered.
The subject, yeah, that helps.
Yes, absolutely. And so, yeah, uh, I think we all, uh, we left with, um, feeling really good that, uh, we're able to get so much participation, so much engagement. And a lot of people that had great questions and really wanted, um, wanted to know more and then, and Duke did a phenomenal job, uh, presenting as well, um, to the group once we had the, uh, a lot of people there. So, yeah, it was, it was great. It was great.
Um, the tourism office.
Uh, we have meeting Thursday.
Okay. Breck history?
A quick little update from the meeting. They're getting going on their summer 2025 projects. Uh, so Preston cabins, that's starting this week actually. Uh, Lorian boarding house, the Riling punt, uh, the Jesse sill base repairs. Uh, they're going to get the bridge out of there at the Jesse by August. And then the cool little trestle bends, um, that, uh, kind of held up the railway over by, uh, the Village of Main Street Station are going to get stabilized by late fall, which is pretty cool. Um, two new board members came online, Sarah Wilkinson from the county, um, and Nick Johnson from, uh, Arapo Architects. And then, um, there've been some concerns about our ability to do anything that requires forest service consultation. Um, and so, just working on that and then looking at capital budget for next year and keeping projects modest per direction from staff.
That's great.
That's the summary.
Okay, thanks. Um, anything to add to the BCA?
No, not really. Everybody has been focused on getting this agreement completed, getting the committee formed and, uh, our next meeting is, I think, June 19th or 16th, something like that.
Okay. Um, Carol, CML?
Um, no, we don't have a, no changes since last meeting. Um, next month is the, um, CML's annual meeting in Breckenridge. So I know town staff has a lot of great presentations. I think it'd be great if we go to, to support, um, town initiatives and also learn what other communities are doing. But that's, uh, I think 24 to 26-ish.
Right.
Yeah.
Great. I concur with those dates. Um, social equity?
Yes, we had a meeting last week. Um, first, we had some folks from the BTO present on their efforts around Breck Pride for next month. And again, this was an event that started with the commissioners. The commissioners decided this was something important they wanted to do and now we're going into the third year or fourth, third year. And so BTO is an incredible partner, has really taken the lead on it. They gave us an overview and one thing that really stood out is how many partnerships the BTO is able to secure with local nonprofits, businesses. I mean, really building it out to be a really great community-wide event.
That's awesome.
Um, and also Lori came to talk about housing. Um, so that was one of the first times that we've talked about housing with the commissioners. So, um, of course, housing is, can be such a big topic. Lori did a great job of providing an overview of all of town projects, touching on the runway and letting commissioners just share some of their thoughts and concerns. I think it's going to be one of many conversations. Um, there were some themes that came up. We had several commissioners talk about how moving forward, the lottery, is really the most fair ware, way to go about it. And that's something we've put into all our new deed restrictions and that's something we are doing. Um, there's concerns about the maintenance policy and then, um, before we make a decision on ADU, some of the other details within the runway project, I think it'd be great to get some more specific input from commissioners before we make those decisions. So, um, I think we're going to regroup and see how, how we can get input from our commissioners who have completely different networks, circles, experiences than, than any of us out here, so.
That'd be really.
Yeah, it's a great meeting.
Perfect. Arts and cultural master plan?
You may have received today a precursor email from town saying that Corona Insights will be sending you in a, uh, a survey shortly. And, uh, I got mine in my inbox and was very excited to see it. So, uh, those, um, there's, it was signed Shannon, which is great. And, uh, so it was just kind of a, um, to heighten awareness that the community will be receiving, uh, these surveys from Corona Insights shortly. And so that's the, uh, first phase and then postcards will be going out after that. And, um, they, Julia was explaining to me, this is really cool, about how if, and if the email doesn't work, meaning if it's sent to you and you don't fill it out, that will trigger the postcard to you, but the postcard won't be sent automatically, which I just think is so rad and I just love seeing, uh, seeing technology work to, to help with our response rate as well as our sustainability goals. Uh, then the, uh, survey will be, uh, sent to, will be used for the partner orgs to send out to their, their folks. So, yeah, excited to see those rolling in.
Your survey online?
Yeah.
Or we'll shame you when you get done. I like it. Okay.
My call.
That's it?
So mean.
Is it too early? Are people not ready to disclose their other matters? I'll let you think on it. We can call it again. Okay. All right, work session adjourned. Be back here at seven. You ready, Nick?
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's now seven o'clock. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for May 27th to order. Roll call, please, May.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard.
Here.
Harold Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman. Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. Approval of the minutes. We're looking at town council minutes for May 13th, 2025. Any changes, corrections? All right, minutes stand. Approval of the agenda. Any changes?
No changes.
All right. Um, communications to council. Now is the time for anyone who's making a public comment, who, um, their topic isn't at another place on the agenda. And I think we will also be doing the Immigrant Heritage Month proclamation public comment here as well. Anyone who wants, wishes to speak can come down to the, to the microphone and state your name. Thank you so much for coming and if you'll just state your name, um, for the record.
Um, hola, buenas noches a todos. Uh, mi nombre es Cielo Galindo.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Cielo Galindo.
Puedo empezar ya? Okay. Uh, primero que todo, pues agradezco el espacio que me permiten para estar aquí hablando unas palabras al frente de ustedes.
First of all, I want to thank you all for the space to speak in front of you all.
Quiero contarles un poquito acerca de, de mi historia y de vida aquí en el condado.
I want to tell you guys a little bit about my story here in the county.
Mi nombre es Cielo Galindo. Llegué al condado de Sumet hace cinco años junto con mi esposo y nuestros dos hijos.
I came to this county, um, five years ago with my husband and our two kiddos.
Quienes han crecido aquí enamorados de este lugar que ahora es nuestro hogar.
Who have grown up here and are in love with this county and it is now our home.
Quiero contarles que soy madre, esposa, trabajadora y una mujer profundamente comprometida con generar un impacto positivo dentro de nuestra comunidad.
I want to tell you all that I am a mother, a wife and a hard worker and a woman that is very, um, I am willing to, uh, make sacrifices to be a part of this community.
Desde que llegamos, nuestra meta familiar ha sido apoyar activamente a las organizaciones del condado que trabajan por el bienestar de esta comunidad.
Since we arrived here, our, um, my family's, um, and I's goal has been to be, um, involved in the community and, um, with a goal to make better, um, uh, anything in the community.
He tenido la fortuna en mi país Colombia, uh, de poder trabajar con varias comunidades y con un contexto social de problemas sociales y poder ayudar a nuestra comunidad. Entonces me he enfocado un poco también a traer algo positivo en esta comunidad.
Back in my home country in Colombia, I have worked with, um, uh, social, um, issues and I am bringing that back here where I can, um, work on that as well with my, um, um, community.
Mm-hmm. Um, sabemos que estas organizaciones que trabajan por nuestra comunidad se enfocan en poder ayudar a nuestra comunidad en necesidades urgentes. Otras ayudan a poder abogar y potenciar las habilidades de los individuos aquí en la comunidad.
I know that some of the organizations in the county, um, help various, uh, people in the community and the organizations focus on helping others.
Sabemos que es un compromiso que nos ha lle, nos ha llenado de motivación para, uh, seguir adelante educando a la comunidad que es la comunidad latina, que queremos ser agentes de cambio.
We know that the engagement that we have is, um, towards making a change with our Hispanic community. And we've been educating our Hispanic community as well.
Además como líder comunitaria tengo el honor de formar parte del comité de líderes del Mountain Dreamers.
As a community leader with Mountain Dreamers, I am invested in, um, in, in this organization.
Una organización que aboca, que aboga por los derechos de los inmigrantes y de la cual me siento profundamente orgullosa de pertenecer.
A, a, um, community organization that supports the, um, rights of immigrants and of which I am very proud to support and be a part of.
Desde este espacio mantenemos latente el compromiso de seguir aportando al crecimiento, a la educación y al fortalecimiento de la, de nuestros compatriotas latinos y hispanos.
From this space, we are, um, we want to engage in, um, helping our, uh, community members, um, in the Latin community.
Como inmigrante y miembro activa de la comunidad de Breckenridge, recibo con profunda gratitud y orgullo la proclamación del mes de la rancia hispana emitida por el pueblo de Breckenridge.
As an immigrant, I receive the proclamation of the, mm, National Month of the Immigrant Heritage here in Breckenridge.
Este reconocimiento no solo honra nuestras raíces.
This, um, not only, um, brings celebration to our roots.
Sino que también fortalece nuestro sentido de pertenencia.
But also makes a strong, um, feeling of belonging.
Valorando las contribuciones que cada uno de nosotros ha hecho con esfuerzo y compromiso y amor por esta comunidad.
Valuing deeply the engagement and, um, what we have given the community, um, with empathy and integrity.
Celebro los valores de inclusión, equidad y oportunidad para todos.
I celebrate the opportunity for inclusion and opportunity for all.
Y me uno también a un llamado de fomentar compresión profunda entre e integración cultural.
And I also come, um, to unite the cultural, um, uh, um, community.
Gracias, Breckenridge, por abrirnos las puertas y por permitirnos ser parte de esta historia compartida.
Thank you, Breckenridge, for opening your doors and letting us be a part of this celebration and, um, in a shared, uh, community.
Como inmigrante, madre y líder, seguiré trabajando con amor y con responsabilidad por una comunidad más fuerte.
As a mother and as a team of this community, I will keep working hard towards the rights of, uh, my community here.
Um, no, gracias. Gracias una vez más. Sí, gracias.
Muy buenas noches. Eh, mi nombre es Osmedo Molano.
Good evening. My name is Osmedo Molano.
Gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí.
Thank you for the opportunity for me being here.
No, creo que ya mi ama esposa lo dijo todo.
I think my lovely wife said it, uh, said it all.
Sin embargo, eh, escribí algunas cosas importantes.
But I also wrote some important things.
Entonces, queremos expresar nuestra gratitud por el espacio que nos han brindado.
We want to express our gratitude for the space that was, um, given to us.
Hemos estado trabajando arduamente.
We have been working very hard.
En pro de nuestra comunidad.
Towards our community.
Gracias a esto.
And thanks to this.
Hemos podido agradecer de manera tangible.
We have been able to give thanks.
Y acercar nuestras ideas.
And get, and share our ideas.
Para el beneficio de todos.
For the benefit of all.
El mes hispano.
The, um, Hispanic month.
Es una oportunidad valiosa para nuestra comunidad.
Is a very valuable celebration for our community.
Ya que nos permite manifestar nuestras necesidades y agradecer el apoyo que recibimos.
We can bring forward our, our needs and, uh, say that the, um, the support that we have received.
Creemos que es fundamental pensar como seres humanos y no tener prejuicios hacia nadie por su color de piel.
I think it is important to think as, um, human beings, uh, without prejudice and to not have any prejudice towards our skin color.
Estamos trabajando para inculcar esta idea en nuestra comunidad.
We are working to bring this idea to our community.
Para que juntos podamos ser una fuerza laboral.
So together we can be a strong working force.
Una fuerza de amor y paz.
And a force of love and peace.
Queremos brindar nuestros conocimientos y habilidades para ayudar a los niños, adultos mayores y personas que necesitan apoyo.
We want to bring our knowledge for the people who need it, for the elderly, for kiddos, for the kiddos who need it in this community.
Nuestro objetivo.
Our objective.
Es trabajar en equipo y aportar ideas para engrandecer a cada persona.
Is to work as a team and to, um, bring knowledge for everyone and every, um, to, to make. Is to work as a team and to bring knowledge for everyone and to make everyone feel important.
Gracias a su apoyo.
Thanks for your support.
Podemos visualizar nuestra comunidad de manera más positiva y sentirnos apoyados.
We can visualize our community as more positive and we feel more supported.
Cuando nos miramos como seres humanos.
When we see each other as human beings.
Sin importar nacionalidad.
Without the importance of nationality.
Podemos entender mejor.
We can understand better.
Nuestro propósito.
Our purpose.
Ayudar y apoyar a los demás.
Help and support others.
Queremos seguir trabajando juntos.
We want to keep working together.
Para hacer una diferencia en nuestra comunidad.
To make a difference in our community.
Y en la vida de cada persona.
And in the life of everyone.
Agradecemos su apoyo.
We thank your support.
Y compromiso con nuestra causa.
And your engagement with our cause.
Gracias por crear este evento.
Thanks for creating this event.
También tenemos algo parte del comité de Mountain Dreamers.
I am also a part of the Mountain Dreamers committee.
Trabajo también con Cafe Food Rescue.
I also work with Cafe Food Rescue.
Y Ferk.
And Ferk.
Esto me ha ayudado a.
This has helped me to.
Ayudar a otras personas también.
Help other people as well.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Angie. I grew up in a mixed immigration household. Seeing all the sacrifices that my mom has made for my brothers and I has motivated me to continue my education. Going to school to get an education is a way to show that my mom left her hometown so we could have a better life and pursue our dreams. My older brother is a DACA recipient who graduated college. These people have shown me that I should follow my dreams no matter what challenges life throws at me. I'm a high school graduate who is going to Colorado State University in Fort Collins to study psychology. I want to become a psychologist to help ease the anxiety that the Latino community faces due to the language barrier. The immigrant community is a big part of who I am and I will continue to fight for their rights. If it was not for the sacrifices my mom made, I would have not been where I am today. I will continue to be the voice for those who are afraid to speak up.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Angie. Crecí en un hogar de estatus migratorio mixto. Ver todos los sacrificios que mi mamá ha hecho por mis hermanos y por mí me ha motivado a continuar mi educación. Ir a la escuela y obtener una educación es una forma de demostrar que mi mamá quería que tuviéramos una vida mejor y perseguir nuestros sueños. Mi hermano mayor es un benedicario de DACA que terminó la universidad. Estas dos personas me han demostrado que debo de seguir mis sueños sin importar lo difícil que se ponga la vida. Soy una graduada de la escuela secundaria que va a ir a la universidad de Colorado en Fort Collins para estudiar psicología. Quiero convertirme en una psicóloga para ayudar a aliviar la ansiedad que la comunidad hispana tiene debido a la barrera del idioma. La comunidad inmigrante es una gran parte de lo que soy y seguiré luchando por sus derechos. Si no fuera por los sacrificios que hizo mi mamá, no estuviera donde estoy hoy. Seguiré siendo la voz de aquellos que tienen miedo de hablar. Gracias.
Alrighty, hello and good afternoon. My name is Brisa Rodriguez and I am currently a sophomore at Summit High School. I am involved in precollegiate, meaning I'm a first generation student. I do cheer and I am the treasurer of our Summit High School-based Mountain Dreamers. And all of these activities that I am in, there are many undocumented students also involved. I am here today to talk about experiences an undocumented parent or child may have to go through. This is a fear that is always in the back of their heads whether we realize it or not. The fear of not coming home, the fear that they will receive a call letting them know a family member will not make it home that night. I know of individuals that have completely changed their college paths in order to be closer to their home in case if anything happens. People that have made plans to know what to do in case a member does not make it home. We have our younger students who if one day come home and don't see a family member, will live in constant fear of what could happen next. Older siblings who have now had to step up to take that parent role. We have people in our community who fear taking a step out of their door because who knows what could be around the corner. These students should not have to worry about what could happen next. These students should feel safe when they go on field trips or simply just walking into a school building. These are people who have only ever grown up in this country but are unwanted for being born on the wrong side of the border. I have this anonymous quote that says, "In the end, we only regret the chances we didn't take." So here I am today standing up for what I believe is right. Giving these people the opportunity they deserve to work so, that they have worked so extremely hard for, way more than meets the eye. I would also love to give a shout out to Breckenridge and to the community Mountain Dreamers for giving people like these that have been put into a group a chance to be what they are: human. Thank you.
Rosa. Okay, muchas gracias. That's about all the Spanish I know. But thank you very much, all of you, for coming. It is certainly the town council's wish to make our community feel supported, everyone in our community, and we couldn't be happier than to have you. I loved hearing your backstories, such wonderful and important members of our community and ready to reach out to each other and reach out to the town council, help each other know what the needs are in our community, and we are just really, really grateful for your partnership in all of that. Okay. So just one last thing. Anytime that you want to come to a council meeting and talk to us, we are always here on the second and fourth Tuesday nights. If you don't want to come and speak in person, you can send us emails. Mayor@townofbreckenridge.com. We really want to know what the community needs and how we can be just a support to you and how that we can be one community in everything that we do. Thank you very much for taking the time. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. I'm going to read the Immigrant Heritage, National Immigrant Heritage Month proclamation. Whereas the town of Breckenridge takes pride in its diverse and vibrant community, recognizing the importance of honoring and celebrating the various cultures that contribute to our community. And whereas Immigrant Heritage Month is observed annually in the United States in the month of June, celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of individuals who left their homes, lives, and loved ones to seek a better future and through their hard work, creativity, leadership, and dedication have played an integral role in building our community, economy, and culture. And whereas immigrants are an indispensable part of Breckenridge's workforce, contributing across diverse sectors, including lodging, restaurants, retail, construction, education, healthcare, public service, and entrepreneurship, thereby sustaining the town's economy and quality of life. And whereas during Immigrant Heritage Month, we affirm our commitment to the values of inclusion, equity, and opportunity for all, and to serving and uplifting regardless of birthplace or background. And whereas Immigrant Heritage Month provides an opportunity to honor the contributions of immigrants, past and present, and to celebrate the shared values that unite us as a community. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Kelly Owens, do hereby proclaim June as Immigrant Heritage Month and call upon all Breckenridge residents to join me in celebrating the cultural achievements of the immigrant community, fostering greater understanding and appreciation among our diverse population. Thank you very much. To all for coming. You're welcome to stay, but we also aren't offended if people want to leave. Okay, we're gonna move on to another proclamation. It's also Pride Month. Go ahead and read this one. Whereas the town of Breckenridge is committed to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion and recognizes the importance of celebrating the unique identities of all individuals within our community. And whereas June is nationally recognized as the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, an annual celebration of the contributions made by the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community, and to recognize the history of discrimination and oppression and honor the ongoing struggle for equal rights. And whereas the town of Breckenridge recognizes these struggles and contributions of the LGTVQIA+ individuals in our community, state and nation, and reaffirms our commitment to creating a safe and welcoming environment for all residents, visitors, and businesses. And whereas the town of Breckenridge supports the LGTVQIA+ community and encourages all individuals to celebrate Pride Month with respect, acceptance, and love, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and town council of the town of Breckenridge officially recognize June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month and encourages all residents, visitors, and businesses to participate in events, initiatives, and educational opportunities that honor Pride Month and the LGBTQIA+ community. Okay. Thank you very much for providing the translation services as well. It's wonderful to have that. Onto continued business, we're gonna go into second reading of Council Bill Number Seven, Series 2025, and ordinance approving an extension to a development agreement with Christie Heights Partnership, a California general partnership extended vesting property rights, Cucumber Creek Estates.
All right, well, good evening, mayor and council. Chris Kulik, Assistant Community Development Director, for the record. Tonight at second reading, we have a bill for your consideration that would extend the existing Cucumber Creek Estates Master Plan an additional five years past its current vested period to January ninth, 2031. There are no additional commitments proposed with this amendment other than it will enable the owners to delay developing longer than expected and continue to lease the area to the Breckenridge Nordic Center for use during the time where it's not developed. There is also a right of first offer. It has been offered to the town as part of this amended development agreement. Be happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for staff? Any comments from the public on Council Bill Number Series, Number Seven, Series 2025? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill Number Seven, Series 2025, the title of which has been read in the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May?
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman. Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, moving into new business. First reading of Council Bill Series, Council Bill Number Eight, Series 2025, and ordinance approving the Runway Development Project Developer Agreement. Lori.
Good evening. For the record, Lori Best, Director of the Housing Department, Town of Breckenridge. And what is presented tonight is the first reading of an agreement regarding the development of the Runway Housing Project. The agreement sets the framework for the relationship between the parties, which is the town and the developer, and established the framework for the project and our relationship with the developer. This, we discussed this in work session. There were a couple minor edits that I think Keely will go through because the version that you're seeing for first reading is slightly different than the version that was in your packet at work session.
Yep, so you all should have a revised version of the ordinance and attached developer agreement. There are three changes from what's in your packet. The first one is in Section 2D, at the end of that paragraph regarding the budget. There is a sentence to allow for revisions to the budget to reflect modifications to the development plan. This is sort of what we were getting at with the conversation about change orders, but those revisions will only take effect upon town council approval. The second change is in Section 12 regarding the developer employee unit. And that language has been revised to ensure that the unit that will be reserved in phase, vertical Phase One for the developer's employee, one of developer's employee, will have to be in either Sale Phase One or Two. And the reason why we changed it to One or Two is because there may only be two single-family units in Sale Phase One. So we wanted to make sure there was at least enough single-family homes to allow members of the public to have a good opportunity to get one of those. And then the final change is in Section 16 regarding the developer fee that just specifies it excludes, it fixes that language that's a little vague regarding costs paid for or directly reimbursed by the town. So changes that to just say that the developer fee is set forth in the budget and excludes only those certain items identified as exclusions in the budget. Any questions on the changes?
Question for Keely or Lori?
Just hit me. Is this, is the offer to a developer unit gonna be in conflict with the school district's agreement?
So, no, they will reserve a unit and that, that unit will, we'll have to figure out how to work that into the deed restriction, but the way I envision it is that the unit will be set aside and won't be subject to the school district priority for the other units. Otherwise, yes, there would be a conflict. You're right.
Any other questions for Keely or Lori? Any comments from the public on Council Bill Number Eight, Series 2025, Runway Neighborhood Project Developer Agreement? Go ahead and come down and state your name for the record.
For the record, my name is Larry Chrisbill. Thanks for the opportunity to address council. I'm fully in support of this project and I appreciate the great, the hard work that's been done by all of you and staff. And so it's really good to see it. I just wanted to share a bit of institutional knowledge that I don't know if you're aware of. Going back to the very early days, the town lost multiple units that had deed restrictions on them in Grandview condos due to being lost to foreclosure because they had subordinated the deed restrictions to the financing. So, when I look at Paragraph Thirteen and I see that the town agrees to subordinate its restrictive. restrictive housing covenant to any financing on the project, you know, it gives me a little pause because I know that what happened. So that may be necessary and it, you know, may be inevitable that that's in there, but it's not a hypothetical situation that there could be a foreclosure and the property could be in peril. And I'm told that a very simple way is if the town has the right to cure in its contract, then it would preclude it from being sold on the courthouse steps and in that case, losing all of your restrictive housing covenants to foreclosure. So. Good work. Keep it up. Thanks.
Much, Larry. We'll have staff look into what needs to be done to ensure that that's not an opportunity. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill Number Eight, Series 2025, and ordinance approving the Runway Neighborhood Project Developer Agreement.
All right, any further discussion?
I think we said it all during.
We did say a lot.
I'm excited for the review of the cost piece and really doing our work there to make sure we're getting the value our community deserves from every housing dollar we spend.
It's a great first step on our way.
All right, roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
No.
Councilmember Gerard. Councilmember Beckerman. Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, moving on to resolutions. Resolution Number Seven, Series 2025, a resolution approving changes to parking rates at town-owned lots. Matt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This resolution updates the parking rate in the airport lot. This rate change is needed as space becomes more limited and the lot is repurposed for the Runway Neighborhood. With this housing project, we have an unmet need for oversized vehicle parking. This resolution will aid in providing the cement to our community. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions? All right, can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Resolution Number Seven, Series 2025, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Resolution Number Eight, Series 2025, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Breckenridge and the Summit School District. Lori.
Yes. Good evening. For the record, Lori Best, Town of Breck Housing Director. This is an agreement that is scheduled for approval tonight via a resolution. It's an IGA with the Summit School District in regard to the Runway Neighborhood. The basics of the agreement are that the town will provide a first right of purchase to school district employees for the units in the Runway Neighborhood with the goal that the school district employees would eventually be able to purchase up to 35 units through that first right. In return for that, the school district is committing to convey the tenant's lot on the McCain property to the town. That's the basics of the deal. There are some, there's some portions of the agreement that talk to if we don't build the second phase and we don't build all 148 units in Runway. That's contemplated in the agreement. And the school board approved this a couple weeks ago at their meeting.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions for Lori? Can I have a motion?
Yes.
I move that we pass Resolution Number Eight, Series 2025, the title of which has been read into the record.
Any further discussion? Okay. No further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, moving into planning matters, planning commission decisions. I have to remind myself what this was for. Oh, this is the shed. Okay. Everyone good? Great. Glad to hear it. Anything you wanna add to your report? Okay. Any other matters? This is your last opportunity for this week.
Other matters?
Yeah.
I had a phone conversation during dinner. It was suggested to me that we have 106 West Back Hall Grease, back to, you know, have a common dumpster or whatever vessel to collect the used fried oil grease from the restaurants and to require any restaurants that want to take advantage of using it to buy. It was Matt from Rootstock, Radicato, who was suggesting this and I thought it sounded like a great idea, but they bought, because they transport grease from Radicato to Rootstock because Rootstock, they have room for a dumpster behind. So they bought these containers that have snap-on lids that, you know, don't leak because they transport them in their own vehicles. And that's, I don't want that to leak. So. Thought it was a great suggestion and, yeah, I thought I would bring it and hopefully it can trickle its way into 106 West and see if that's a possibility.
Yeah, everyone in agreement that staff could at least talk to 106 West and see if that's something they have space and ability to do? Great. Okay.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Anything else? Town cleanup starts at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday? Question. Jane, do you know?
I thought it was 9:00 a.m.
Start. Calendar says eight. That's what I was confirming.
So for those who can't hear online, town cleanup starts at 9:00 a.m.
Great.
It's breakfast.
Okay. Any final things? Laura's gone, but I'm really glad that she organized that. That was awesome. Really fun. Really fun to hear from community members who we haven't had in here before and a testament to her relationships in the community, for sure. Okay. That's it. Good work, everyone. Meeting adjourned. All ready.
All ready.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. Nine or eight for cleaner?
Nine.
It went in and out.